Welcome to our city council meeting. It is nice to see a full house. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order officially. This is the city council meeting for Wednesday, November 20th, 2024. All council members are present except for Councilmember Bloom. And our first item of business will, or first item on the agenda is a flag ceremony. As you can see, there's no flags up here yet. This will be led by Troop 92, the Flying Tigers. Go ahead. Make sure that's on for you. Okay.
Color guard attention. Audience attention. Color guard forward march. Color guard, post the colors. Salute. Color guard, honor your colors. Please repeat the pledge allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance. To stand in my nation, under God, indivisible, with the Two. Color guard dismissed, audience may be seated.
Thank you, that is so much better than just having the flag up here and doing a pledge of allegiance. I love it. Thank you so much for being here, guys. Our, our next item is a special recognition. This will be a badge pinning ceremony-ish type thing. And we'll turn the time over to Chief Maxfield from the fire department.
Good evening, thank you council for giving us a few minutes to recognize some of the accomplishments of our firefighters. We have a couple of things tonight. First of all, we want to recognize some of our firefighters that have received their professional credentialing, their supervising fire officer designation through the state. We've got six firefighters, I'll ask them each to come up right now. Austin Shelley, William Potter, Zach Sumner, Blair Marshall, Brady Cragan, and Jason Mon who isn't able to be with us tonight. He's in a, actually in post, doing some training to be one of our investigators. While they come up, I'd like to mention, I reached out today to EUPR and spoke to Lori who kind of oversees the coordination of all of this. And she confirmed what I suspected, but that is that West Jordan is leading the charge in our firefighters receiving this designation. She said that I could safely say that we have the most firefighters in the state that have done this and have received this. So I think that's just a great testament to the hard work and dedication and professionalism of the men and women of the West Jordan Fire Department. So we're, we're excited to recognize each of them tonight and award them their certificate. If you guys would just stay up here to the side, we'll bring up the badge and then afterward we can get a picture. Earlier this year, the council approved some funding for us to convert a Battalion Chief FTE into a Deputy Chief FTE to help us with some of the workload that we have and also with some succession planning. So tonight, we are going to recognize the promotion of Battalion Chief Clint Paxton to Deputy Chief. Travis Ball has been promoted to Battalion Chief. And we've also added a new firefighter paramedic to our ranks, which is Taylor Mackey. He just concluded with the Fire Academy just a couple of weeks ago. So if I could have each of them and the person that will be pinning their badge come forward. Okay, and, and if it's all right, Chair, we'd like to invite any family members that would like to take some pictures really quick while they do the badge pinning, if you want to come forward. But you can go ahead and pin your badges.
Yeah, feel free to come on up, get a better angle, nice and close if you want to. You can tell them to slow down or push harder. There's paramedics in the house, if you wound somebody, it's okay. All right, now for a picture, let's have the firefighters squeeze in here in front of the dais. We'll stand up here and kind of squeeze together and you guys can get pictures with us. Mayor, you can join either up or down. Pick, pick your poison and Chief Maxfield, of course, join on in.
Thank you for allowing us to do that and recognize our people. I think as you can see, the city of West Jordan is in good hands. We're really grateful for our firefighters. So also, if I could just announce really quickly, any family members that are here for the badge pinning? We have some refreshments across the hall. If you want to just head that way.
And I'll just point out that Debbie, or new Battalion Chief Ball was my handler when I went through the Fire Ops 101 there. Kept me from, you know, killing myself and showed me how to cut open a car, so that was awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations and thanks for being here. We'll give them a moment to... You sure you don't want to stay for the public hearings? All right, our next item on the agenda is our public comment period. This is your opportunity to address the council on pretty much anything that has to do with the council or the city. This is not the public hearings, so the public hearing on ordinance 24-53, 2447, and 2448 will be in a minute. Those are the, the, the West Jordan Apartments Traffic Calming One and then the Copper Meadows application. Those will be in a minute, so that's not this. This is time to talk about anything else. If you want to address the council on anything, the same, same rules apply. Basically, you have up to three minutes and we'll have a timer on the screen up in the corner for you so you know when you're running out of time. And if you're in the room and you'd like to speak, you just need to come to the microphone. If you're online and you wish to address the council during this period, you just need to raise your hand on the Zoom. So go ahead and open that up and take those in the room first. Thank you, just give us your name, of course.
Hi, my name is Amy Mata. And I am a volunteer with a nonprofit called Bailing Out Benji. And I would like to ask that the city council pass a humane pet store ordinance, which prevents pet stores from selling puppies from puppy mills. And tonight, I wanted to tell you about the man who owns the puppy store in Jordan Landing. His name is David Solinas. He's from Southern California and he started breeding puppies years ago out of his house and then he graduated to a pet store and getting puppies from puppy mills. When California passed a statewide law banning the sale of puppies in stores, instead of changing his business model to a humane pet store, like we see PetSmart and Petco, that stores that do not sell puppies, he chose to create a nonprofit rescue and to continue selling puppies through the nonprofit. Well, the Attorney General for the State of California investigated and went after him, at which point he closed down his nonprofit and moved to West Jordan and started the puppy store. He also owns stores in Vineyard, Las Vegas, and St. George. The federal case against him for this non-pro, fake nonprofit that he started was concluded this summer and he was hit with a $3.9 million fine. He has since closed his store in Cedar City, but the one in West Jordan remains. Don't be under the impression that he is a small, family-run business. He is not. He doesn't even live in Utah, let alone in West Jordan. He does not deserve your support nor your business. For anyone on council, the mayor's office, in administration, or in the audience, I invite you to join on Facebook, the group Puppy Mill Free Utah, to learn more and to help us fight this store. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to address the council on something that is not one of the public hearing issues coming up in a minute? Go ahead and come on up. And again, give us your name for the minutes.
Jake McNinch. I am a bountiful city hopeful and West Jordan City resident. I would just ask that the council tonight take into consideration what happened during the Planning Commission meeting for the Copper Meadows Development. I think that the Planning Commission Chair, we would ask as the people for him to step down as he cannot perform his basic job duty to listen. Listening is hard, I know. But I don't believe he can, can, can perform that task.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council? On another topic. I didn't see her, she was hiding in the back.
Yes, I was hiding in the back. I'm Anne Marie Barrett, the manager of the Bingham Creek Library here in West Jordan. And I just came to share a few fun things about the library, like I do. Right now, we have a really fun family activity coming up this next Monday night at seven o'clock. It's just an hour, but it's done in concert with the Salt Lake Children's Theater. It's Wonderland awaits and it's going to be really fun. So we hope to see you and family members and anybody who is interested to come. It should be a really fun night. We are going to be closed for Thanksgiving and of course, the day after Thanksgiving. And we do close at six o'clock, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So slightly altered hours, but we hope to see you guys in the library next week. We don't want to be empty. We are open on Saturday though, so that's great. And we also have a wonderful activity that will be in the beginning of December. It's 12 Days of Giving and we've actually already started, but we're, all of our registration is filled up through November. So definitely hop on our website and feel free to sign up for one of the kits that you can take home to make fun little, easy craft gifts at home. We do ask one per family and the registration opens up just one day, one week in advance. So they're on Tuesdays and Thursdays, the first two weeks in December. So still some fun ones coming up. Registration hasn't opened up yet, but it will next week. So we hope to have people use that. And finally, I did bring our nature backpack now. I've told you guys about this before, but these are now winter backpacks. So they're not just the summer that we used to have. And we've got some really cool, different themes. This one I brought was the snow, but we also have one on weather, another on birds. And then finally, one on crystals and colors. The snow one has a snowball making. And also, we have a snowman making kit with pieces in there. So there's tons of other fun things in there as well that we hope that people swing by and check out some of the cool things we have. And the nature backpacks are really cool and ready for winter. So thanks so much, we're so glad to be part of the West Jordan community. You guys are wonderful.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Is there anybody else in the room who'd like to address the council? I'm not seeing any. Do we have any online with a hand raised, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, there are 45 people online, one of which has raised his hand, it's Mr. Wilkinson.
Mr. Wilkinson, you should be able to unmute and we'll go ahead and give you three minutes.
Yes, thank you. So I was going to talk about the $210,000 payment that West Jordan City made to Sheri Meyer. That was the individual who allegedly had her civil rights violated at that hotel. This is a couple of years ago, I think. This payment was made back in May, 210 grand. There were five officers who were sued personally. I wish I had their names so I could shame them here publicly. I'll get to that in a few weeks. What I, what I was going to mention though was a few months ago, I was told to work with Toni Barker through the, about some issues I had. And she was a communications director for West Jordan or something like that. I was able to talk to her once and then after that, she refused to respond to my emails and phone calls. And I understand now she's no longer working for West Jordan, I don't know why. But she, I asked her something and she gave me a very good idea. She said, if you, if you don't like the, the representation, the city government, you need to do things to convince your neighbors, you know, people who live in West Jordan to vote them out of office or pressure them to resign or do whatever you can. And so I, I, I like that idea. I think that's good advice. So I was, I was going to start here. It's actually about Mr. Jacob himself. Back in 2006, October 10th, there was a stalking injunction filed against Zachary Paul Jacob, who, who I have confirmed is, is the same Mr. Jacob who's hosting the, or, or conducting tonight's meeting. The, the thing with the stalking injunctions here in Utah is they're, they're filed preliminarily and they have to be filed with evidence of two or more incidents that would cause a reasonable person to suffer emotional distress or fear for their, their safety or the safety of others. There has to be pretty substantial evidence filed initially with these or they just get tossed out. Now, back on October 10th, when this was filed, a reputable judge in the 3rd District here in Salt Lake County deemed that there was evidence that stalking had occurred by Mr. Jacob and he entered the order temporarily against Mr. Jacob. And that became permanent November 20th, strangely, 18 years ago to the day, 2006. That was entered permanently against Mr. Jacob. His city bio says he was married in 1998. I confirmed with Mr. Jacob that this was the victim of the stalking. And I won't say alleged because it, it's been a judge to have happened as a matter of fact in law. Was a former girlfriend of his. So I don't understand, you're married for what, eight years approximately? And you're still stalking?
Thank you, your time is up. We'll go ahead and move on. Is there anybody else online who's got a hand raised, Mr. Anderson?
No, there's 47 online, no one has raised their hand.
Thank you, so we'll move on then. The next item on the agenda is reports to council. We'll start with city council reports, Councilmember Whitlock.
Thank you. First, I'm going to beat you. I just want to welcome the Jaguars that are here, West Jordan Jaguars. I love that their history department realizes how important city government is and encourages their students by, you know, it's part of your grade encouragement to come to one of our meetings. So welcome Jaguars, we're happy to have you here. We, we had the opportunity to attend the veterans program. And what a great, what a great time to honor those that serve our country, to allow us to be free, to allow us to come to public meetings and say whatever we want. We can disparage other people, we can lift people up, the choice is up to us. We get to decide how we want to use our freedom of speech. And I love it when people use it in a positive way. And to further things that are important to them, as we saw tonight with Ms. Mata. The other thing I want to shout out too, I don't know if any of you have not had the opportunity to go to Dunford Donuts and have a chocolate cake donut, but in my opinion, if you haven't, you are really suffering. And they, although they are a family business originally that had been in West Jordan for many, many years, they recently remodeled and had a ribbon cutting with our West Jordan Chamber. And it was really a fun opportunity for most of us. Sadly, one of our council members has an allergy to flour, so it wasn't so good for them. But it was so fun to go in and see how they process all that bread and those donuts. There was a, there was a thing of frosting probably this high with sprinkles on the floor as they were frosting and doing the donuts. It was amazing. I asked, what do you do with that? Because I don't like waste. And so they told me that anything like that that is waste is collected and, and fed to the pigs, which sounds like a good idea, get some real sweet bacon that way, I guess. Just thanks to those that put the veterans program on, I enjoyed it.
Councilmember Green. You talked about two of the three things that I was going to, but yes, thanks for Dunford Bakery for being there. And like you say, they've got the best chocolate cake, chocolate, chocolate covered cake, chocolate cake donuts. Stop by, they'll sell you a dozen or two or as many as they've got. The, the veterans, the special thanks to city staff for the Veterans Day Ceremony as a veteran of some, almost 40 years. That meant, that it meant a lot to me to be there for that. So thanks to the event staff, the fire department, the facility staff that put the chairs out, took them down. I'm sure it was the facility staff, right, Corbin? And special thanks to the Veterans of Foreign War who came and did the 21-gun salute. And, and I don't remember the gentleman's name, but he always comes and plays taps and does a great job, so we appreciate that. Last week, I was able to attend the Council of Government Meetings last Thursday. I attended the Council of Government, Governor, Council of Governments Meeting because on the last meeting of the month, they invite the members of the Association of the Nissel Councilable to show up. So I showed up as a part of the AMC, some interesting presentations. One that hit home in particular is that Wayne Nederhauser, the Chair of the State Homeless Committee, was talking and talking about some housing affordability and talking about the elimination of garages on houses. And it's like, well, jeez, and, and the mayor happened to mention to Wayne, yep, that's what we thought, that's what the council in our city talked about last night. So our, so our discussions on the carports and those kinds of things is on the front of trying to make a difference. I talked to a couple of people sitting around me from the AMC and they were, they were kind of interested in what we were doing. So it was, it was a good chance for us to be out front about the, some of the housing issues that we have. So I, that, I just wanted to report that back, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Shelton.
So to begin with, I'd like to just let everyone know that I went out to visit the Copper Meadows site twice in the last two weeks. This has been a, a big issue on my mind, it's weighed heavily on me. And I just wanted to report that I've, I'm I'm weighing, I'm weighing things and it's not been an easy, easy thing for me to, to work through. I too enjoyed the Dunford Bakery re-grand opening and the facility tour. However, I disagree about the chocolate cake donut being the best. It's, it's probably going to have to be the apple fritter for me. Veterans Day Ceremony was amazing and I'd just like to thank Councilmember Green for his military service and representing the veterans on our council. We had an art center tour last week that was very interesting to get to see what's happening out there. That building should be done in, I believe, April, was it April? Yeah, fingers crossed if we get an electrical panel. I also attended a, a Lake Leaders Initiative meeting at the University of Utah. A meeting that was centered around preserving the Great Salt Lake. And learned some interesting things about, about that. And they were offered their assistance in helping city leaders write code that would be water-wise and, and help to send more water to the Great Salt Lake. And a couple other classes I attended were put on by the Utah League of Cities and Towns and also the Utah League of Cities and Towns Legislative Policy Committee Meeting. Attended that and had some active, active couple of weeks, so thank you.
Councilmember Bedore.
I'll continue the somewhat subliminal ad for Dunford Bakery that it was, it was a lot of fun to go to. Supposedly, you never want to hear how the sausage is made, but seeing how the donuts were made was actually really cool to see that. But I think the thing that got me was the fact that how big the place was just inside once we got in. And I had no idea that they also make the hamburger buns for many of the places around us. And they're all different, so they have to retool and get ready to fire them up. So just amazing work that's going on there and just what a, what a great little hidden gem for, for many people not realizing what's, how big that is there here in West Jordan. They're, well, they're in a very good district, in fact, a great, I would say the best district in West Jordan, and that is District Number 2. And I'm grateful that I get to smell their bakery pretty much every single day. But I also want to take a moment, the, the other things that, that happened going to see the Art Center, the Veterans Celebration that was, that was done, amazing things. But it was good, this time I was able to get my schedule to work out that I could go to our youth council meeting. And I really want to highlight the work that Mr. Hallmark does on with the youth council, getting them together, having things for them to talk about and keeping them excited about what's happening. We, it was fun because he had them put together two groups and put together parks. What would they want to see in a park, which is something we're doing here on a council. And it was interesting to see that a lot of the things that they think a park needs lines up with the stuff that we're, we're doing, looking for. the stuff that we're, we're doing, looking for, and putting that together. But it was a very interesting little bit. And I loved the way he put that together. And it was so much fun being a part of that. The youth council, much bigger this year. It's great to see. And the kids are really into it. I also love the very next day, going to a town hall meeting for citizens who are concerned about what's going to be happening in the old Pearson's Farm group, how much the staff was ready to answer every question that came, whether, and, and we had members of fire and police there as well to, to answer questions and let them know what was going to happen. I think that was one of the best town halls I've been a part of since being on this council. And I think everyone was able to leave with a very good understanding of what is, what is being presented there. So I like the idea that, just the proof that communication is a great solver of many problems. And, you know, finding the reality of things instead of really starting to let your imagination wonder what if, but seeing the reality of it, that that was a great part. And I loved seeing our city in action these last couple of weeks has been, been a lot of fun. So thank you.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Chair. If you live off of thirteen hundred West and there are Seventieth South and Seventy-Eighth South, you might have noticed that all the cones are off the, well, the cones are still there, but they're off the street and the street is wide open now. The street, however, is in disrepair because when they put the street back together, they had to get it done before the winter. And eventually, once the winter's over, the new company, is it called Enbridge? Enbridge Gas will be back to fix their pipelines. I thought, oh, no. Like, I had to go through a summer of water pipes and now I gotta go through probably another summer of Enbridge gas next year. But after seeing what happened in South Jordan and understanding that the gas line there was leaking and caused an explosion that was deadly, this is much needed. Those of us who live on the western, sorry, on the eastern side of West Jordan know that our infrastructure is old and, and not crumbling, but it's, it's older. And so in areas, water pipes are breaking and other things are happening. So it's actually good to see something like this happen. From everything I understand is once that's done, then we will go through as a city and all of thirteen hundred West from Seventieth South, probably down to Ninetieth, will also be fixed so that it's back to a smooth road and not like a bumper car ride at Lagoon. So, but I wanted to thank city staff and especially our water team to make sure that those pipes got in. For those of you who don't know, they pulled out some corroded pipes that were about this big and put in brand new pipes that are about this big. So they doubled, almost doubled the size of our water infrastructure, but they also put in pipes that are probably last, hopefully fifty years or more. I know these older pipes last a long time, but they corrode it easily. And so it's great to see that we're getting new pipes in areas where the infrastructure is older. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think that's everybody. I'll just add that it was the first time in my nine years on the city council that I think every council member was at the Veterans Memorial Day Ceremony. So that was the first time that everybody had been there. We usually have two or three or four, but this time we had seven. That was pretty cool. All right. Next item is the council office report. We'll go to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Just, just two things for this evening. The first one is, you notice I moved one of the lectern mics down. That is not feeding out. You can hear it in here, but it's not going to the overflow rooms. And so we're just going to use the right mic for this evening. For everybody that here that wants to do public comment, just use the mic that's already standing up there for you. Second thing is, we were able to work with the communications department to get some information out to the public about some rather significant changes that are coming to council meetings, starting at the beginning of the year. So that went out in today's email to residents. And just to summarize some of that for the folks that are here, council meeting in 2025 will be on Tuesdays instead of Wednesdays. They will have the work meeting or the work session meeting beginning at four o'clock until six, about six thirty. And then council meeting will start at seven o'clock on the same nights. And those nights are the second and fourth Tuesdays, starting in 2025. Planning Commission will be the first and third Tuesday. So Tuesday night, there'll pretty much be a meeting here each Tuesday evening. As many of you on the council know, we use Prime Gov as our agenda management system. And they're introducing probably February, March timeframe, some significant upgrades to the, the Prime Gov system. Some of those include a web-friendly ADA compliant public portal. I can't remember. It's WCAS two point two or something like that. They'll be introducing that. The other thing that you've authorized to purchase is the Swaget add-on module that will supplant YouTube. So now what we will be able to do, starting early 2025, probably January, is we will be able to provide live closed captioning in English and Spanish for our residents, as well as there will be a transcription service. So a few days after the meeting, the meeting will be fully transcribed and available for the public. And that'll maintain in history as well. So I'm working with Prime Gov to go back to at least when we began using Prime Gov and hopefully even back to when we changed the form of government back in January of 2020. And that'll be a great asset to our residents. They will be able to have full transparency of the things that were discussed. When you click on the words in the transcript, it'll take you to the video timestamp where those words were actually spoken. So it'll be very interactive in that way. And the search features are being enhanced on that. And we expect all of these upgrades to happen in the first quarter of 2025. And that's our report for tonight, council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Green. Question. Didn't you say, didn't you say something earlier that they're doing a public notice module too that will?
Yes, thank you for that reminder. They are working on a public notice module so that we would, hopefully, I haven't seen everything that it does yet, but I'm hoping that it will allow us to do public hearing notices on the website on the same portal. So thank you for that reminder.
All right, thanks. Next item up is the mayor's report. Mayor Burton.
Thank you. A lot of good things happening in the cities and a couple of those I'll share with you. Danin, who makes, actually Denon makes Danin yogurt, they are getting ready to do another expansion again, which will increase their size even more and bring in more production here in West Jordan and hire more employees. So that's good news for our economic development side. Along with that, as you may know, SME Steel, isn't that a great picture? SME Steel is also getting ready to expand and bring in very, very many more employees. By the way, if you know of someone who's looking for work, both those companies are hiring currently. And we kind of talked about this one in lots of good detail. Thank you for being there and helping them celebrate their grand reopening. They also make, had grilled cheese sandwiches for us on that day. Wayback Burgers had their grand opening. And that's a picture of me with the Wayback Burger owner. I tell you his name, but I don't remember. And we talked about the Veterans Day event. There's a couple of photos of the Veterans Day event. Thank you, council, for letting us put these events on and, and making a difference to our community by honoring our veterans. Okay. So, as you may know, there's a lot of concern about lead pipes in our communities. And West Jordan is in the process of inspecting, because West Jordan has no lead pipes, but some residents may. So we've been inspecting lines between city system and the residents to see if they have lead pipes. And the good news is, so far in our inspections, we have found no lead pipes. We have not completed our inspections. We're still working on it. We have a few left, but we've done a big part of the city. We anticipate it may continue as it started out. So that's excellent news for people who drink water in West Jordan. The water you get from the city makes it to your house still clean and pure. And while Warren's looking for the next slide, I want to tell you, not all of West Jordan City is, receives our water through, through West Jordan. Some of it is through Kern's Improvement District. And Kern's Improvement District has also gone through and inspected their lines. And the entire area of Kern's Improvement District has been found to be no lead pipes. So that's good news there as well. Okay, I see it in the small one there. Okay, coming up, we have a, our first Friday holiday event. This is going to be more than just our concert this time. This is also going to be our holiday party for the, for the whole city and kick the holiday season off. So Santa will be there. We'll have some drum shows there. People can come and make smores. They can come and get pictures with Santa because he'll be arriving. They can, there's some other activities, smores, hot cocoa. It'll be a great event. And then those that want to stick around for the concert can stay and enjoy a free concert, which will also be holiday themed. So we had a fantastic turnout last year. We expect it to be a fantastic plus turnout this year. And because of Thanksgiving next week, we encourage you to stay home with your families, or you can go elsewhere, but don't come to City Hall because we'll be closed on Thursday and Friday. Yes, police and fire will still be working. And if there's other emergencies, we'll take care of those as well. Because, oh, well, go ahead. So green waste is, program is ending, but also keep in mind on Thanksgiving, there's no trash pickup on Thanksgiving Day. So if your trash normally gets picked up on Thanksgiving Day, it'll be on Friday. So next week only, if your trash is picked up on Friday, generally, it'll be picked up on Saturday because the Friday ones, Thursdays will get picked up, Friday, Friday will be picked up on Saturday. Now, with the green waste, that's also the last week for green waste is Thanksgiving week because it's the last full week in November. The week after that's not a full week. So that is when green waste will end. It'll come back to us again in April. So feel free to do that. Now, I realize somebody's going to say, but all the leaves aren't off my tree? That's okay. Put them in your black can. Is that it? Okay. Well, there was more. Isn't there another one? Yes, there was on, on streetlights. I guess that didn't make it on there. So there was some questions about the streetlight replacements. There it is. Because the council approved an additional or added additional fee onto the streetlight fee to cover additional streetlights in areas that don't have them. And as of that time the fee went into effect and up to now, we've added approximately two hundred and fifty additional streetlights in dark areas that don't have them. We did really good last year, but 2024, we, we're still doing good this year, doing less because our electricians kind of got distracted on replacing what copper lines that got stolen. And that's taking their priority because we found that higher priority to get the lights back on. And then we go back to putting in the other lights in when they get that done. So that is still happening and going forward. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to put those lights in. Is that all of them, Warren? Oh, yes, this is good. I apologize. Shannon's been sick the last couple of days. Normally she gives me this list, so I'm using my memory now because she was sick. But customer service, we are moving, opening some customer service so they can either go to City Hall like they do now, or two days a week, they can go to Public Works. And they can reserve a dumpster, they can pay their utility bill. We'll have someone there that speaks both Spanish and English. And they can have accommodations there. We're going to try that out for a while and see how well that works. If it works out well, we'll make that to into a full-time position at that spot. Now, we're not hiring another staff to do that. We're just moving one staff member from here over to there. And as you look in there, that little counter right there, that'll be the desk they sit at. So they won't be in the desk that's behind there where we have Katie sitting. They'll be right up at that front counter to greet people when they walk into Public Works. And so they'll also greet people and do that kind of like Julie does here at City Hall. Great, thank you. Are we good now? Thank you very much. That's my report. And I'll turn over to Corbin.
Councilmember Whitelock has a question.
Oh, yes. Well, now I have two questions. Typically, first Friday is a veridian, is the Christmas one there as well?
Yes.
And will it be inside activities or outside or both?
Yes, both. Because the drum show will be outside, the smore cooking will be outside, Santa Claus will start outside, but he'll come inside. You can take your pictures indoors. And they'll have some other events happening indoors. So it'll be both indoors and outdoors. And the concert is indoors.
Thank you. And then you said that there would be some opportunities two days a week, but I didn't hear the two days a week at Public Works.
That's because I was trying to, on my notes, I'm using my memory. Tuesday and Wednesday is the days, as I recall.
Okay.
I will follow it up with an email.
Maybe just so the public knows, maybe Marie can include it in something.
She will be. We'll get that notified out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good suggestions.
Thank you. Next up is the city administrators' report. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Chair. I would like Greg Davenport to give you an update on a couple of public utility projects. That's all I have.
Just a quick update. New Begum Highway Sewer has been completed and they have done a final walkthrough and they just have a punch list items left. If you drive there, you'll see that their equipment is gone and so is the traffic control. That has been a very long project. It took over two years. Want to thank you for your patience. Thirteenth West, the water work is done. As I talked about, there's still probably some things to do with the patches that are out there. But that contractor will be moving and come, Enbridge or Dominion will be moving in. That's my report.
I'm guessing a walkthrough of the sewer, of a sewer project isn't what it sounds like?
It's walking the whole project and seeing if some of the material or the workmanship wasn't up to our standard. And then marking that and saying, you need to replace that.
Above ground?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Correct.
Just, just check.
No, no, nothing underground. Yes.
I've, I've seen, I've seen Les Mis. I know you can mark your sewers. All right.
Any, any other questions?
Any other questions? No, I think we're good. Thank you. All right. That is the end of the reports section. So now the moments you have all been wait, well, moments some of you have been waiting for. Our first public hearing on the agenda is, on the agenda, it's item six A, ordinance twenty-four dash fifty-three. Oh, and by the way, hang on one second before I start this. There are, there is seating in here. If anybody's in the overflow room downstairs in the community room and you want to join us or you're going to want to speak at either public hearing, you're going to want to come up here. You won't be able to speak to the meeting from down there unless you're like on Zoom on your phone or something. But there's plenty of seating in here. There's probably room for fifteen or twenty people in here still. So if you'd like to make your way up here, if you'd like to address the council on either public hearing item. So our first public hearing item, ordinance twenty-four dash fifty-three, a petition requesting a major variation to approve plans and development standards for traffic calming and traffic flow for GEM West Jordan Apartments by the Gardner Group. Max Muller is going to address us. Come on up, Max.
For some reason, I'm really craving donuts tonight. I don't know what that's about. No, seriously, thank you for your time. And before we begin, Max Muller with the Gardner Group, I just want to thank the staff of the city. They've been really great to work with, communicative and collaborative. And that has made, I think, everyone's jobs much easier. So, so I'm here today to petition you for a major variance from our approved plans. Those plans were approved earlier this year when we did a zoning change. And we've, we've slightly altered our plans and that's what we're going to talk about. So there's the site, Gem, West Jordan. It's just one word. And it's west of Echo Ridge there. And I know some of the neighbors are here and we've been talking to them. So here was the approved plan by the city. And what we're going to be talking about specifically today is the alignment and the routing of ninety-five forty south, which bifurcates our site directly. And so here is, as we started the site development plan, here's what we proposed. And you'll see fairly different. And there's actually on the next page, a lovely side by side. No, doesn't have the, oh, yeah. Oh, fancy. So what you can see on the left there is what was approved by this, by this council. Again, as I said earlier this year in our development agreement. And on the right is what we're proposing. And essentially, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Is that better? What we're proposing essentially is to sort of a circuitous route for ninety-five forty instead of directly through our site. And the purpose for that is really traffic calming, the pedestrian experience and and the lived experience for not only our community members, park users there. That'll be a public park, which we discussed a couple of weeks ago with this body. And obviously our neighbors to the east. So that is, that is essentially our proposal. And that is our request. There's, there's no changes to the overall plan. Simply just the routing of 9540 through the site. And as an aside, I know we'll, we'll have some people come up and speak about this. We have spoken to some community members who have concerns about safety really specific to the park. Uh, and, and that is something I've already spoken with planning and we're going to work on more, collaborate with those community members and city planning to ensure that that park is as safe as possible for its users. So, um, thank you. And I don't think.
Questions or? We, we do have a, at least one council member with a question. Councilmember Whitelock.
Uh, I have three.
Yes.
With the change, does that change your number of parking stalls?
Uh, no, actually. Wait, other way. Um, so we were required to provide 70 parking stalls for the park. Um, right now, as contemplated, we have 77 stalls. Uh, and so hopefully we can arrange them a little bit to make it a little safer there. So there's fewer parks. But anyway, we're, we're overparked as it is.
And, and what is the plan to ensure that those parking stalls that are for the park aren't always occupied by occupants of the apartments?
Sure. Um, so there's, there's a few, uh, options we're, we're investigating. The first would obviously be no overnight parking, um, after 10:00 PM. I think that behooves the city, um, anyway, because it, obviously you don't want people car camping there or otherwise. And so I, I think those stalls would obviously after a certain time period, you couldn't park there. We will keep our community members in the know that those are, uh, community parking for the park only. Um, it, that park is to be owned by the city. Um, so we'll be as collaborative as possible with our management and the city to ensure that there's no cross parking to where it becomes an issue.
Thank you. And, and the connector into the Echo Ridge, that road was already approved. We're not approving that road tonight. That was already approved. We're just saying, do we like the new design better than old design? I do like your new design. I think, although I'm not often a fan of traffic calming because traffic engineers put things that, I know they think they're calming. To me, they just irritate me. But this one I like because it doesn't make a clear shot into the single-family neighborhood. It requires you to, to think before you head that way, which I think is a deterrent to go that way. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yeah, I have a quick question. Uh, when we talked about parking stalls, but when you're comparing these two and you do the numbers, on the old version, I see 13 buildings plus the pool building. On this new version, I see 14 buildings plus the pool building. So we've added one more building. So does that mean we've added more apartments from the previous? So, so because there's one more new building, what's the change in number of units?
Sorry, the units have, I didn't, shook my head, but, um, the number of units has stayed the same. So we were approved for 336 units. Um, when we laid it out, it was a, a guesstimate about how many units were going to go in each building.
Okay.
Um, we still have 336 units, same amount of parking stalls that were required. Um, and, and so nothing has changed from what was approved as far as number of units or parking.
So instead of 336 and 13, it'll be spread out into 14. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
24 units.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bedore.
Uh, just quickly, uh, you answered the question. I, I think you just answered my, my question about the parking. You, you said that you kept the 77 for the park, but I just wanted to make sure the actual parking for the residents. Did that stay the same or did that change?
Yeah, that has stayed the same and that was what was required by our development agreement. So it hasn't.
I didn't sort of massage. Sit here and do this the whole time.
No, yeah, you sit and you massage it and, you know, planning's made sure we're keeping it.
Okay.
Councilmember Shelton.
Oh, Green, sorry.
This one may be more of a question for staff. So Taylor, you may be able to answer this better. Generally in a complex like this, we have to have two entrance, two entrance, two ingress, egress, right? Um, and we've got the one that goes out on 6800 West and we've got the one that goes out on Wells Park Road. Does that one have to go out on 9540?
Uh, that's a good question, Councilmember Green. Uh, not for egress, but we do have a code section that requires public roads to be connected when the property next to them develops. Uh, it's 822B, I believe is the code reference.
But, okay, so, but 9540 is a public road that needs, it needs to be connected to the adjoining properties. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that road has to connect through. And so that is a public road. It will continue to be a public road through the Gem project.
Okay.
If I recall, or is it? It might be private, right?
Uh, no, we're gonna, that's all.
I mean, 9540, the public part of that is going to end at the park, right? Or what's going to be public through the, through this?
So it'll be a private road with public easements for access. So it'll be a public road that people can drive on. It's not going to be gated or for the community only. But, um, I think it's after the park because that's the only way we can get that perpendicular parking adjacent to a road is it has to be privately owned. I'm pretty sure that's the case.
Okay. I was just looking at a way to say, does that even actually have to go through? But, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shelton.
Thank you. Um, I know you've already been asked this question about how do we keep the parking for the park separate from the parking for the residents of, of the facility? I'm not sure I was completely satisfied with the answer. Um, no overnight parking? And then just an education campaign?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll be enforcing parking, um, and, and want to work with the city to enforce that parking as well. You know, residents will, uh, obviously get to park on our site and I, you know, I guess to, to answer your question, there's, uh, a possibility someone could park over there, but they couldn't park overnight and that would be the issue, right? If you come and visit during the day, I would assume, you know, you have the same right to park in the public parking as you. But our hope is, and we've provided enough parking, that it, it shouldn't become an issue.
I guess that makes sense. If you're a resident, you're going to want to park overnight.
Correct, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, I'm not seeing any Taylors. Is there anything you wanted to add presentation wise? All right, perfect. Well, then go to the public hearing and invite members of the public who would like to address the council on this topic. Is that for streaming purposes? What's going on here? Okay. If you'd like to address the council on this topic, go ahead and come on up. Uh, give us your name and you'll have a three-minute window. If you're online and you want to address the council on this topic, you need to raise your hand.
Hello, I'll be here on behalf of the Echo Ridge HOA. So if I could get to five minutes instead, I'd appreciate that, please. Could you guys please pull up the map, the one map that he had up there again, uh, with the two different, uh, plan approvals there? Uh, that one right there, could you? Okay. So today we, Sheriff Joe Rummel with Echo Ridge HOA. Okay, thank you. One of the things we were looking at there on the map, unfortunately, we only saw the new updated one about three days ago. I don't know what happened. We never saw the updated one. We were never consulted on the updated one or anything like that. The last time we were here with city council, I spoke with you guys. And I said, we are very, very, very against the road going through 9540. Does it make sense? It doesn't add up. The road is actually smaller. If you go look down there, I went and measured it today. It's smaller than the actual access roads everywhere else. If you have a vehicle parked on either side of 9540, there is no way two cars are going to fit down that lane. So I'd really ask you guys to consider, and I understand you're going to have the parking spots there, but what about just cutting off that road? You're talking, it's still going into a private road. Uh, we talked about the parking spots there. Let me explain the danger to the parking spots that we talked to the developer. If you look up there to the brown spot right there by where the parking is, that brown spot right there, that is a children's park. So you want to have through traffic coming with the children's park right on the edge. We talked to the developer about that. He said due to utility easement ways, they have to keep that somewhat there. Now, they may be, it may be possibly moving it. We're working with the developer as of today. We got to have, we had a call with them. But there's a lot of things like that. Parking, you have cars parked there and you have kids playing there and they come out through on the thoroughfareway, somebody's going to get hurt. So what we were thinking literally, the safest thing, you're talking 25, 30, maybe, maybe 50 yards of drive right there. Literally just shutting that off, let the public come in through the apartment, still park there because I understand they need parking for the park. But prevent that as being a thoroughway so that the people don't, the kids don't get ran over. The original plan, the original, original plan, if you remember, was a roundabout where the kids could cruise through that park without having to cross the road. That is only a five-acre park. That is not a big giant park. It's very small. You start getting kids that have to cross that road. Think of the safety. Now, I know we're an awesome community. We're moving forward. We're moving up. We want to make sure if there's any way, shape or form, we can get that cut off. If we can't, then we really worked with the developer. We're coming up with some other ideas, but there's a bunch of things inside that picture that we'd like to see changed. I understand you voted on the other one. What we are maybe possibly asking for is a continuance until we can look at that road and see if there's any way we can shut it down. Now, we called today to the city because we heard it was still there. The city gave us a code. We went and looked the code up and all it is is a master plan. Okay, there's no code that says that road has to hook to any other road. Okay, and if you do got one, please supply it to us. We would love to see it. When we called the city today, we were told the, the code we were given, we researched it, was just the master plan. And when I researched that, as you guys all know, and I appreciate you thinking about this, the master plan can be adjusted. Okay, so we're asking you to look at that, possibly closing that down. Uh, and still, you're still going to have your parking. You're not giving anything up. It doesn't make sense that they're going to come into a neighborhood and drive through a neighborhood to get out when they don't have to. Also, if you look at the original plan over here, they had four exits, entrances and exits. Now they only have two, not coming into our neighborhood. Those are big changes that we just didn't care about. We thought, that's crazy. When you're going to have, you think about this, you're, right now, you're scheduled for 500 cars to park. 500 in that area. Okay, 336 homes, 500 cars in that area and you've got two entrances. And if, I don't know if the fire department's still here, but I would challenge them to try to get their tiller into 9540 also. Never going to happen. So I would ask you guys consider close 9540 down. Leave the parking if you absolutely have to. Or the other great alternative is put your parking up there on the top of the screen next to them other parks and make a great big one-way long strip. Then you're making it a lot safer for all the kids that are going to be playing in that park and doing their thing. And we don't have to worry about cars running directly through the park. The plan itself, we like. We just really want to work on that one shot of 9540. I'm just giving you guys some different ideas. I understand that city property up there when we talked to the developer up on the very top. But maybe that's something we could look at doing if the city wouldn't mind because I know you're going to get it back anyway. The parking up there makes it a lot safer. Shut down 95 and just leave the five-acre park. That's what we were originally told. The park was going to be there for us. Or not for us, sorry, for everybody. We did not have a clue we were going to run a road through the park and make it more dangerous. Thank you and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council on this who's not from, yeah?
Uh, my name is Jenny Erickson and I am a resident of this neighborhood. So I agree with everything that Joe's saying, but this has been on my mind as a mother for the last few days. I have a visitor, sorry. Um, so as we read through the request for council action, um, the staff analysis actually says this was a necessary and beneficial change to the community to use that road. And once again, we're just asking like, we've lived there for a decade and this road hasn't continued through at that time. Um, and there's really no reason why it needs to. Um, we get concerned when we don't quite understand how we go from public roads to private roads and how this falls under the code that is being known as required. So the code is actually Article 8, Chapter 4, Section 2B, and it says, "Public street extensions shall be constructed in accordance with the city's master street plan, street standards and specifications." But it was also changed on January 6th of 2020. So a big part of this is we're asking, yes, please, just don't make it need to go through. You know, I honestly read every one of the council's, um, profiles on our city's website and each one of you have lived here, have raised your children, have children that go to the same high schools that our children are going to go to. You love walking your dogs and riding your bikes just like we do. And this is a big concern for the safety of our children. And when it comes to this, like, we know that we're saying that they're going to change the amount of parking spots, but in the end, there, we live next to Wilshire Apartments. They park on the street because there's not enough. And I can guarantee this is going to happen again, that they'll park on our city's streets in our neighborhood. And that just adds a whole nother problem that comes with it. So we're just asking that each of you think about this and try to make a change. Make it that we don't have to have this road because there's no necessary reason for it when there's already two other entrances. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the group who'd like to address the council? Oh, I got, I saw people stand up. I was all excited. I'm not seeing any others in the room who'd like to address the council on this one. Is there any online, Mr. Anderson? With a hand raised.
Yes, there are 59 people in attendance and one of whom have, have raised their hand. It's Mr. Wilkinson.
Mr. Wilkinson, we'll go to you for three minutes on this, uh, public hearing.
Oh, thank you. I'm, I'm more concerned about the enforcement. I, I know we, we had some representations tonight that there would be enforcement of some of the parking. Uh, some things like that. My, my confidence in the West Jordan City Police, if, if they are to be a part of that, is, is quite low. Uh, some months ago, I, I filed a grammar request. Uh, I, I asked how many citations have been issued for a very specific traffic law? This is probably the most violated traffic law in the state. In fact, I'd wager my life that it is. Uh, most of the people in the room right now, uh, on your, on your way home tonight will violate this. It's, it's 41-6A-704. Uh, and this governs the, the left lane traffic. It's, it dictates the left lane on, on public roadways are, is solely a, a passing lane. Um, a, and I know most of you will violate it because every day on my way to work, I'm stuck behind people who are in violation of this law. Uh, in two, in 2023, West Jordan City issued two citations for the violation of this. I see at least 30 every, one way, uh, driving to work, uh, probably another 30 or 40 on my way back. They issued two. So I don't know what's going on with the law enforcement there. They're, they're clearly not enforcing the law. Uh, the, it, the enforcement of this specific law would probably decrease my morning commute by seven or eight minutes. Um, I know that because when, when I drive the, the, the exact same way, uh, at different times, that's about what I save. If these people just get out of the way. And, and most of you in the room, yeah, you're, you're, you're the problem. I, I'm sorry. So concerning this specific project, you know, there, there's not going to be any enforcement of this. Are you kidding me? Uh, I mean, the officers out there are absolutely incompetent. Like I, like I said previously, West Jordan City paid $210,000 because of the conduct or, uh, the, well, yeah, the conduct of five of their officers.
Let's keep it germane to the application.
No, no, I'm going to, I'm going to say what I want, stalker. Okay? Um, and you were judged to be a stalker about 18 years ago, Mr. Jacob. So, uh, like, like Councilmember Whitelock said, I have the ability to say just about anything I want. And so, yeah, that, that's what I'm going to do. I have, I have real concerns about the enforcement here. Uh, because the West Jordan City Police are incompetent. Let, let's keep it germane now to this conver, to, to this discussion.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Your time is up. We will go now to anybody else who would like to address the council on this public hearing. Or apparently, you know, whatever.
People, I'm Brittany Bazanson. I live in the Echo Ridge neighborhood. The people that have spoke before me have really already said the things that I need you to hear. So I don't necessarily need to reiterate those things to you, but I just want to say on our behalf that I feel like our neighborhood, when it was originally planned, was supposed to have homes all around us and it's been rezoned over and over and over and over again. And I feel like we just continue to get the short end of the stick. And I guess I'm calling on you as our public servants to try and really think about the people that live here. My neighbor, my backyard fence will be matched with this. And it's taking away so much that we have loved about living in our house. And to have this road go through, it's going to really devastate my neighbor who lives on that road and has a business where he needs his tow truck there. So I just, we want to be able to have the parks. We were supposed to have a huge green space. It's been whittled away and I just guess I want to reiterate and say, please really consider our, our pleas with you.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, we do have one more online?
Yes, there's one more online. It's identified. It's Jen's iPhone.
Okay, Jen's iPhone. Uh, go ahead and unmute and just give us your name, please, because it's not on your profile, other than Jen. Somebody named Jen's iPhone online who wishes to address the council? Are you, are you there?
Yeah, she needs to just unmute.
You need to just unmute on the Zoom and you should be able to join right in. Jen, we will come back to you. I'm going to go ahead and bring this back to the council right now and I'll preserve the right. If you, if you do unmute yourself and start talking, we can hear you. I will stop what we're doing so we can listen to you. But in the meantime, we'll bring this back to the council for discussion. Uh, Councilmember Whitelock.
So this is for Mr. Chandler. So I heard from Taylor that, that we do have code and then Joe says it's not. So I don't really know what the code is because I haven't memorized the code. I am not Councilmember Green. Um, so my question for you is, even if there is code, can we choose to say in this instance, we're not going to connect that road? Because there is a difference in land use from what it was when that connector road was there. I think they're correct. Originally, we were going to have more homes. Then it was decided that area is going to be commercial, so it changed. So these, these, when they first came to us, I felt was a good buffer. But I can see their points and I want to know how we can make it better. So the question is, do we have the authority to say we're not going to put that road through?
I'll look to Mr. Jensen and Mr. Murray if they'd like to come on that, comment on that before I get to it.
Okay.
All right. Um, council, I just wanted to, uh, mention that we found the code reference. It's a different one. It's 1455A, which requires any stub street in a subdivision to be connected. So that was the reference. The 842 that I had given out previously was the wrong one to reference. So if you want to pull that up, I just want to make sure that we had the right code reference on the record.
But seems like we make changes and exceptions frequently in this room, especially from your department. And so my question again is, do we have to? Can we make a different change? Can we choose as the body?
And I'll leave that up to legal. I don't know.
Okay.
My interpretation of 1455 and then also the section after the ones that, the one that was mentioned earlier, right after 842, there's 843, specifically subsection G. I think between those two sections, um, there is that requirement that there be a connection to an existing stub, stub street. Um, I think to do otherwise, you'd be ignoring the code. So I think you'd probably have to either amend the code or enter into some kind of development agreement. But clearly those sections, especially 1455, apply. And the, the council should follow those sections unless you choose first to either amend that section or have some kind of development agreement.
So as a follow-up question, how, how far does that street have to connect in? Can it, does it have to go a long ways? Can it go a little ways? How far does the connect?
I think that's a great question and I think you have a fair amount of discretion as to how far it goes, but it does need to connect.
It can connect, but it doesn't have to go that far.
Yeah, that's my opinion, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Green. Okay, so I'm, I'm going to address, one, I like this plan better than the old one. If I'm forced to vote tonight, I'll vote for this. But I will tell you that I'm of the opinion, we have 100 and, well, we have 116,000 residents in this city and we have 116,000 cul-de-sacs. Because, you know, you go into my neighborhood and there's, there's, there's three of them within a quarter of a mile and probably two or three more in, in Councilmember Lamb's neighborhood. We have cul-de-sacs everywhere. I, I'm having a hard time figuring out why we get, why we can't extend 9540 and put a cul-de-sac at the, the end of that and the road dead ends there. And, uh, the road dead ends there. It's a cul-de-sac just like we do with cul-de-sacs on, on a whole bunch of other properties. If we need to change ordinance to put a cul-de-sac there or to dead end that at a parking lot, then I'm willing to, I'm willing to change the code. Because I think, I think that, you know, you hear that, you hear the residents and what they're concerned about. And I will tell you that if you look at the, will you bring up the chart? The, the map? Um, go back, that one. If you look du, due north of building 13A, there's another little street there that goes into, guess what? A cul-de-sac. So if the cul-de-sac's going to end in a park, parking lot there, I have no problems with cul-de-sac ending up in the park, parking lot in the middle. The other thing that we can do if they need another entrance is that just north of building 13A, you can put, it, it, it'll take out a couple of parking spots that may have, but you take it out a couple of parking spots and there's an extra entrance that goes out onto that street so that traffic could go out there and then go out to, to 6800 West without having to loop around in the circle. So from a convenience standpoint, if we opened up that, whatever that street is, um, to the north, north of the property line, we open that up out to the street, there's an entrance there. There'll be an entrance to the west, an entrance to the south. And then we block off the one at 9540 at the appropriate spot where the city parking lot, parking lot line is. Then if, if we did that, then in my mind, or make it a little bit of a loop, it might eliminate a couple of parking spots. But it allows the park to have some parking spots down by the park that they could drive to. But there would also be ones that come this way and it would be easier to enforce and there'd be that, there would be that curb and gutter, the barrier between the apartment complex parking and, uh, the Echo Ridge Street, the Echo Ridge access parking. So like I said, depending on what we want to do tonight, if we, if we have to vote on this, I'm going to vote yes, but I think that we need to make some adjustments. If not, I'm okay with a continuance, uh, to, to work on this because I don't know about you, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to amend the code. Even if this takes a code amendment to end this street in this apartment because of different uses, uh, I mean, I know what the idea of this, the, the purpose of the stub street was. Um, we see stub streets in the city all the time and they're supposed to connect to the next neighborhood. A lot of the stub streets don't connect between high uses and low uses and those kind of things. And this is really there for the park, right? That the ax, as much of this 9540 there is to access the park as it is to, to transit through, because let, let's, let's be honest. I, I'm, I'm going to be honest here. Nobody in Echo Ridge is going to drive through the apartment to get out to 6800 West when they can go over to Wells Park and do it. The only people that are going to go out 9540 are the, uh, the, the apartment residents. And, and so if they have three exits, they don't, the fourth one seems immaterial and they can go down and park by the park. But that's my opinion is, is I, I, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever we need to do to dead end. Really what we're saying is we're dead ending it into the park because the park is now the terminal use of that neighborhood. Dead end the street in the park as a terminal use. Close that and then the apartment has access to the park because they've got property next to it. We do that and we call it, and we call it good. Councilmember Lamb.
Seems like we have an easy solution and I'll start with the developer of the apartment complex. I'm pretty sure he doesn't need the stub street. I'm pretty sure if we tell the developer we want to close it off, he'll go, okay. Because for his apartment complex, he doesn't need it. Uh, secondly, like the other council members have said, I'm looking at the stub street right now. The first I thought, the city had the code because of fire, fire, um, war, um, problems, right? We need it open, so the fire trucks need to it. Well, the problem is now we're going to cut off the fire trucks on that lane anyway. So they can actually go through Lee Heather Way to get in anyway. So the stub street doesn't need the fire access right now. So, um, it's our city. It's our code. Um, the code right now says we have to have the stub street open. Let's change it. It's our job. It's what the citizens want. So what I would say tonight, as I'm looking at this is, yes, I like the new plan. The new plan, so it doesn't have the straight through shot. And I think the developer likes the plan, but as a council and as a body, let's cut off that road because we can. So, thank you.
Councilmember Shelton.
Thank you. I think, uh, the point's been made. I don't need to belabor it any longer. I, I really appreciate the residents coming and voicing their concerns. Uh, to be honest, it was not on my radar. And now it is. And that's thanks to you. So, uh, let's, let's act as a council and make this right.
Councilmember Bedore.
I'm like the guy at Thanksgiving dinner when everyone's saying what they're thankful for. I'm at the end, so there's nothing left for me to say, but I will. Um, I'll point out that I thought the, the original plan, I, if I was around at that time, I wouldn't have voted for just because of that straight line there. Just seemed like just a bad idea to begin with. Um, I originally liked, you know, what they've done with the circling it. But, uh, as Councilmember Shelton and some of the others have pointed out, I'm grateful to what the citizens have said here because I kept looking at this going, I don't, I don't see why we need this to go through, but I guess it does. Um, regardless of what we do, and I say we, we should cap this. But, uh, I would actually like to see, and I think it was, uh, Mr. Romo that was saying, move it down so it's one long strip and see if we can get more parking out of that northern, uh, place and see if that's enough to fit. Um, if not, maybe a couple, but I like the idea of something that's just a straight, uh, a straight thing there. I am all for, and I don't think we want to do anything to stop what the developer wants to do with the land because I like this new, I like this new layout a lot. But I think we as a city need to see what's going to be the best use really for the citizens around that park and for the park itself. And that shouldn't have any rule bearing on, on what goes on with the, uh, with the development.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you. So I have a question for Mr. Murray. And I'm sorry, sir, but I don't remember your name, the developer. Um, so the first question is, what is it?
Max Muller.
Mr. Muller, please come forward. Uh, the question for you is, are you willing to, do you need this approval tonight? Can we delay it or can we, and this is kind of for both you and Mr. Murray, because do you need it tonight or can we somehow in our motion? And would you be amenable to that being basically a cul-de-sac where the stub street comes in so that we follow our code? Still allows park, parking, but it does create a barrier. You still have your ingress and egress that are required. And it was mentioned that, you know, well, maybe you could put another one up to the top, whatever that other cul-de-sac is. Um, are you amenable to any of those changes?
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, I think that this is all fairly logical. Um, and we, I mean, it was, we had only put that through a street in because of city code.
And we appreciate you looking at city code and trying to follow it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Um, uh, we are aiming to put our final site development plan in in the next few weeks and this would hold that up. So any way we could avoid that and say, hey, just stop that road would be great.
Okay.
You know, I, I don't, I don't think we probably want to belabor this point me coming here as much as I like you all. Um, but anyway, so yeah, it, we're, we're fine with it. It was, we really didn't love the idea anyway.
Okay.
That through street. I think we have the same issues, but it was just the restraints for the building.
Okay, well, because what I've heard from all of my fellow council members is that we'd like to do something different. So, Mr. Murray, come on up and tell us how to legally create a motion that allows us to listen to our residents, accomplish something that we would like to accomplish and help the developer get going now.
Okay, I, I think that was really helpful hearing from the applicant, the developer, because clearly he voluntarily is acquiescing and so you're not twisting his arm. He, uh, it's his application. He can move forward with it the way he wants. Before answering your main question, the, and I haven't had a chance to confer with Taylor again, but my understanding is that in addition to the code, 1455A, what we were looking at was good, and I'm not putting words hopefully in Taylor's mouth. I'm trying to represent what he told me a few minutes ago. But it, it represents good regional neighborhood planning, uh, not just for public safety, fire and so forth, but to have good overall, uh, traffic flow, that kind of thing. If, if you could maybe allow Taylor to finish that thought and then I'd be happy to answer your question if that's okay.
All right. Thank you Duncan and council. Um, yes, that, that is the original reason why I think 1455 exists is so we don't have neighborhoods that are walled off from each other. Um, you know, having neighborhoods that are inter-inclusive, interconnected, where you're having, uh, people of different demographics, age groups, socioeconomic levels, being able to intermix, that's good for community building. It helps communities be sustainable and healthy. And so that's probably one of the reasons why that ordinance is in there. Um, but as Max mentioned, I think the biggest priority for tonight is to have a clarity for that moving forward. We don't want to hold them up when they're trying to be a, a good developer in responsive to complaints, um, concerns for the neighborhood and the council. So obviously we as staff will support what the council does, but I think that there were reasons why the ordinance was drafted and, um, it is important to remember that. And something I was just mentioning to Josh is, um, we did a traffic study. That traffic study showed almost no trips would go through this neighborhood because you have Wells Park and they're calling it Jones Brother Road. It'll be the new one they're building, which will draw the bulk of the traffic. So if this was approved this way and it did become a problem, the city always has the option to go back and close that road off at a future point because it would be a city road. We could block that off. Um, but it's likely that if this was built, I think you're going to see that it's not the concern. Uh, that's what our traffic studies are showing.
Okay, thank you, Taylor. I'd like to add that I agree connectivity is really important and that we do want that. I think a cul-de-sac accomplishes and a park in between the two communities accomplish that. I think the road in between was meant for single family to single family when that step road was put in. So for me, I would prefer that tonight we solve this and allow Mr. Mueller?
Mueller.
Mueller and his company to move forward and to also listen to the residents. Oh, Muller, thank you.
Muller.
I'm sorry.
Depends on how German it is.
I just, for me, listening to residents is really important. And, and I, I think that you heard from the council that we want- And, and I, I think that you heard from the council that we want to do that. So now we're asking legal that we might have an idea on our own.
Okay, so to answer your question, which is how to frame a motion to accomplish the cul-de-sac, right? Um, one of the advantages that we have here is this is not, um, an application before you for a brand new development plan, which should be very specific. And just like a text amendment where you want exact words, maybe a few words changed from a dais is okay, but it needs to be clear. Same thing with the, the drawing, it should be clear. This is a little different than that. We already have a development plan. We have a lot more flexibility here. This is just a request for a major variation. I think you can easily accomplish that in a motion tonight. I think the motion just needs to be specific enough. That maybe you identify the streets and then instead of it, uh, going from the east to the west, at a three-way intersection that maybe it's just ends in a cul-de-sac. You know, before the, what would normally be the three-way intersection, as long as you can describe it in a way that anybody could easily understand what you're saying. I think it meets the intent of, um, the code section. I think it's thirteen seven I five or whatever that talks about major variations. It just needs to be clear in your motion where the cul-de-sac is. Because the plan's already in place, right? All the developer was saying is, hey, can we make a slight change? If you can make the, the change clear in your motion, uh, in some fashion like that, I think you're, you're good to go. So.
So with that chair, can I make a motion?
One, one second. Shoot, I just lost all train of thought. I, I have the magic screen right here that has a teleprompter drawer, sketcher on it that I could kind of I want to make sure we're all on the same page. So can I sketch out right here what you, what I think I've heard from all of you and then we, and then you can move according to that? What I'm hearing is you cul-de-sack out right here.
Cul-de-sack out. No, I would go deeper to the property line.
Well, okay, so the substrate comes up to the property line right now, right?
No, the property, this, this, the city property line is the trees.
Oh, this is, this is property line right here.
No, but the city, the new property line is going to be the trees. Because they're going to need that.
Right, but I mean, the substrate that exists now comes to this point, comes to right here, right?
It's cul-de-sacking all the way up to that other point.
So you're talking about bringing this street up all the way up to here and then cul-de-sacking?
Yes.
So.
Are close to that.
Okay, see, and this is why we're doing this, because we're not necessarily all on the same page. Well, here's, okay, now, since I haven't had a chance to weigh in on this, here's why I was thinking about doing it like this. Is now you have park connectivity through here so that you can walk from the basketball court to the soccer field without having to cross a road or a parking lot.
Leave, leave that up. Let me just, let's do this. Can I make a motion?
Go ahead and Councilmember Green.
I am going to move to approve ordinance number twenty four dash fifty three. With the exception of ninety five forty south. And that ninety, so everything in the major variation is approved except for ninety five forty south. And ninety five forty south must be terminated at the city property line. Let me rephrase that. At or before the city property line. And that any modifications to how ninety five forty terminates is a minor variation in the development plan. So what, so the reason why I make that move.
I'll, I'll second that now for discussion. Councilmember Green has a motion, I'll second.
Thank you. The reason why we, we can do that is it, we're saying that the road's going to terminate. What we'll do is we'll let staff and Mr. Muller and the gardener group and everything figure out how the road terminates there. And if it's something like Councilmember Jacob Drew that says, I want the, the cul-de-sac to terminate so we've got some crosswalk through the park, then great. If the cul-de-sac goes all the way to the property and we figure out how to trail it around, great. We'll let staff make that decision. But all we're going to do is say that we're approving this with the exception that ninety five forty terminates at the city property line. And we'll let staff figure it out and make that modification. Does that make sense? Mr. Murray.
Yeah, and I, I think that's specific enough to meet the intent of Utah Code. Title ten, chapter three, I forget which section that it needs to be specific enough to vote on. I think that's very specific. I don't think it would hurt to ask the applicant one last time before you vote on it. Um, that if, if that's, uh, if he voluntarily acquiesces to that.
Mr. Muller, will you stand up and give us a thumbs up or a, are you okay with that?
We'll go, we'll go ahead and let you come to the mic. This is a little bit unorthodox.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, I, um, no, I, we have no issue with that. I think if that's what the neighbors want, um, we were just trying to go with the codes. So, thank you.
Cool, all right. Any further discussion to that motion? Councilmember Bedore.
I would just add, uh, once we started looking at that, I, I do agree that the, the children play area being so close, we could bump that away a little bit. In the original drawing, there were trees and stuff that kind of stopped that. So just make sure we take a look at that as well while we're in there.
Cool, seeing no further discussion, I think we have clarity enough to vote. Ms. Quick? Ms., Ms., Mrs. Quick? I don't assume. Are you clear on the motion, city?
All right, uh, we'll start with Councilmember Green.
What's that?
Vote, this is, this is the vote.
Oh, yes, I'm voting yes on the vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero.
Yeah, and just for the record, I'll note that Councilmember Bloom joined us at about seven thirty, seven thirty one, two, on the, uh, on electronically on the Zoom, so she'll be here for the remainder of, hopefully for the remainder of the discussion tonight.
Me too.
Welcome. Good to have you. All right, and the next item on the agenda is the moment you've all been waiting for. This is public hearing six B for ordinance twenty four forty seven and twenty four forty eight. This is a petition from Barrett Peterson slash Peterson Development for a master development agreement slash plan for Copper Meadows. And amending the general plan land use map for Copper Meadows to low density residential and a rezone to the planned community zone. And we'll turn this to the applicant, uh, is Barrett or Justin? Justin, go ahead and come on up.
Thanks, Councilmember Jacob. Uh, my name's Justin Peterson. I'm with Peterson Development. I'm here in Barrett Stead. And, uh, I'll be brief as Jeff will be doing the presentation, but, uh, it's nice to, uh, be before you and, uh, and, and just to stand behind this project like we've tried to stand be- behind uh, other projects in the, in your city, uh, that we're owners in and, uh, and, uh, that we've been partners with as community builders. And, uh, appreciate your, your openness to this proposal and, uh, between Jeff and myself and our engineer, we hope, we hope we can answer any questions. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Come on up.
Thank you, council, um, staff. Public service is service indeed. Yeah, like Justin said, we're here with our team, um, Jeff Seaman, Justin Peterson, uh, Scott Howell, everyone knows and loves Scott Howell. And Thomas Romney from Focus Engineering, they're representing the engineering firm who we work with and he does a great job for us. So, um, the principle of private property rights is fundam- is, is a foundation of a, of our, to our society. Granting individuals freedom to use, develop and benefit from their property while not infringing upon the rights of others. This property, or this principle, excuse me, um, drives responsible development and innovation. And our Copper Meadows, um, project exemplifies this balance by enhancing the community while aligning with the city's vision for future growth. So since the last time we brought this, um, project before you, we have made a, a number of, um, revisions to our, to the plan. This is, uh, this is the master development plan and the concept, or, or what we're, we're proposing today, it's not a concept. Uh, among those improvements, um, working with staff and listening to concerns of, of the neighborhoods, we removed a trailhead that, that would have been right there at eighty two hundred south. We preserved, um, more open space and, um, hillside, uh, adhering to the hillside ordinances. Um, and incorporated an integrated, uh, trail system. We're maintaining the buffer from any existing neighbors. In fact, you see, um, the green space between the, the units to the north, you see eighty two hundred south dead in there. There'll be at least a thirty-foot buffer from fence line to fence line. That, that trail will use, um, it'll go through there. So, so we don't even have fence lines that are rebutting any existing properties. We also, um, shifted the higher density, um, housing southward to take advantage of the property's grade. The, the, the location of the, the townhomes was a big concern for the neighbors. And so what we did is we shifted that further south so, so it wouldn't impact them as, and so, um, you can see how that lays out there. The, the townhomes, north of the townhomes is, is a slope, it's a considerable slope. That's, uh, it's at the bottom of that gravel pit. So, um, it's going to be barely, barely visible from any of the homes sitting on top of that ridge. So, um, and a further refinement to our plan that we brought from last year to this year is the, the overall density. It's reduced from five point zero units to the acre to four point two. And thus qualifying for a low density residential project. So, um, these are, these are the modifications that were made. Throughout this process, we've heard concerns regarding, uh, acreage requirements, commercial components, open space, gravel pit remediation, property values, crime, and of course, traffic safety. And we've, we've addressed each of these. You know, as far as the city code compliance, our application meets city code. The council, y'all have discretion to approve or, um, adjust a PC zones acreage and commercial requirements. Realistically, in this, in this area, com- commercial isn't, isn't viable. And, uh, I think the last thing that residents and neighbors would want is a steady stream of, uh, people coming to this neighborhood and leaving, um, to, and which would be necessary to, to, to have a successful business, right? So, so, um, uh, of course, city professionals, planners and city, uh, legal counsel have ensured that this application, um, adheres to all necessary standards. Um, a lot of talk has been about the open space. The light green area with grades over thirty percent is not calculated in the twenty percent requirement of open space. If, if it were, um, uh, you'd have a total of twenty three point six six acres of open space or nearly thirty one percent of the whole project is open space. Granted, but so, um, the, as far as the gravel pit remediation, um, this project, um, follows successful examples such as Quarry Bend and the, in Sandy. If you know where that is, that's off ninety of south, just below thirteenth east, between nine and, ninth and thirteenth. Um, and the silos in Salt Lake City transforming gravel pits, um, into vibrant community spaces. The proposed number of units in this project is imperative to remediate. Is, is crucial in making remediation financially viable. Um, so we've got to have the, the right number of units to be able to remediate that. Leaving the, um, reducing any unit count would render the project unsustainable. Uh, and leaving the gravel pit an unremediated eyesore. So this is a unique opportunity, um, to turn this site into a great community asset. As far as traffic goes, um, most traffic to this property will, will enter until Stokesley Drive gets completed further to the south. But traffic will enter off eighty two hundred south. Could be a different story if traffic to this subdivision were, were going through the existing subdivisions. But that's not going to be the case. Eighty two hundred south is more than, um, able to handle any increase in traffic as the, as the traffic study, um, notes. Housing and crime, you know, crime is influenced by socioeconomic factors and community cohesion, not by housing types. Um, research shows that well-designed neighborhoods with mixed housing like Copper Meadows, um, foster safety and engagement. So, um, including a diverse, uh, our inclusion of a diverse housing project or options, excuse me, including the metal, missing middle housing adheres to highest design standards while addressing community needs. The community definitely needs some of this middle housing. Studies also confirm that high-quality developments with thoughtful design and amenities, um, do not negatively impact adjacent property values. Uh, Copper Meadows, as you see here, um, with its reduced density and significant open space, actually will enhance the property values of the neighbors. So, um, we, uh, we're kind of living in a different, uh, uh, interest rate environment than we were twenty years ago when, when the neighbors to the north were built. Or even five or ten years ago when the neighbors to the east were built. With that, interest rates increase has really priced a lot of people out of the market. This missing middle, um, housing gap that this project, uh, provides is imperative for the growth of the city. So I begin by discussing private property rights. Um, the freedom to use, develop and benefit from property without infringing on others' rights. So I respectfully ask those making public comments tonight to state which of their rights is infringed upon by this Copper Meadows development. In conclusion, this project demonstrates how private property rights can align with community goals. The interesting thing and the ironic thing is that the current future land use designates a, a public facilities and parks in this area. And essentially that's what you're getting is parks. But it's not maintained by the city, it will be maintained by an HOA. So we're fulfilling public aspirations without adding burdens to public resources. So we respectfully ask that you join city staff and planning commission and approve the Copper Meadows subdivision rezone that we're asking for tonight. Thank you.
Jeff, I have a, a quick question for you, if we can. I had a good conversation today with a resident, um, who reached out to me and we had a, we talked for almost an hour on the phone. And we kind of went back and forth a little bit on a couple of definitions and a couple of things about what's better about this than the old one and what might have been better about the old one than this one. Kind of went, went around a little bit and we almost came to a consensus, almost. I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth. If we can make one change, and I don't know, this isn't going to sway everybody and I'm not going to pretend that it will, but and it was these, I'm going to use my magic finger again here. It was these, um, cottage lot, not cottage lots, carriage lots that are on, that abut Stokesley there. Up here on the north side, you've got, south of, or, uh, excuse me, east of Cricket Lane, you've got houses that are basically the same width, for the most part, lots that are basically the same size as those on the other side of eighty second. And to the north side, the lots are smaller, but there's the same number of them that abut to the north of the, the property as well. Now those ones are bigger, so we took the same width and squished them all down into one end. But, you know, so what I'm saying here is an attempt to kind of, um, compatibilize, that's probably not a word, uh, you know, the, the, this plan with what's existing, except for those ones on Stokesley. So if we could trade or make these ones more of the cottage or garden style lots and maybe, you know, take out and maybe, you know, take out a couple of these or a couple of these and put just one, you know, one or two more, um, of the carriages, or maybe closer to the park instead of on Stokes Lee. And that way, everything that's across the street of anything that's already there, and granted, I know there's this, uh, basin area, but that way, you're kind of matching up everywhere, you know what I mean? Do you have any thoughts about that? I wanted to, to bring that to you and ask you that question.
Um, I get the ask, of course. Um, there's, there's a lot that goes into it rather than standing here and making a decision right now.
Well, sure, and I just, I'm just, general openness, general thoughts, just. Putting you on the spot a little bit.
Our engineers, I, I mean, if, if there's flexibility in our master development agreement, and it's something we could take a look at, is what I could commit to right now.
Right, okay.
And if, I don't know if you have.
Mr. Romney? Yeah, based on grading and spatial, how things fit, it could potentially be done, but it'll usually dominoes into other things.
Sure.
So there's things we need to look at. One of the reasons we did what we did there was because there's that, so Ivory owns.
This junk.
Um, that piece, and so because that sitting is open space and we have Stokes Lee as the collector road, um, you know, a lot of things are eye of the beholder and, and along Stokes Lee, you're gonna have a masonry wall as well. So we felt like there was enough buffering between those different things and it's just that transition down into, um, that gravel pit kind of, um, clusters and townhomes, so that was why we did what we did. It's something we could look at, but I can't say right this second what.
Right.
Like, how it would fit and what other domino that might create.
Right.
Just for curiosity's sake, you know the, the width of Stokes Lee Road right there? Just so we can get an idea of what we're talking about, I'm asking Thomas.
Okay.
It's gonna be around a seventy-foot wide road. I don't remember off the top of my head what your collector road is, but it's.
Taylor's got it.
Sixty-seven, so pretty close. And it has a trail, and it has a trail on it, it has a larger park strip, and then you have that buffer of open space detention area. So, yeah, I'm not saying it can't be looked at, it would be really nice. Anyways, yeah, it can be looked at.
Yeah, okay, I wanted to bring that up. And that would probably, I mentioned it to staff earlier, that may, depending on how many dominoes that tips, that might be a minor variation that could be addressed with staff maybe before the subdivision plot comes up. So I just wanted to bring that up because that was a good conversation. I kind of saw her point as well, so I wanted to, to mention that, 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 I sounded like a good idea to me.
I do, I do think it's helpful to note distances, though. You're talking.
Right.
From home, from home to home, that's, that's a pretty significant distance.
Right, so, I gotcha. Okay, council member Bedore, this is more questions for developer.
Yeah, just what, um, what is the, um, overall, all plan in terms of phases? What's gonna be going in, in which direction and what kind of timeframe are we looking?
We do have a phasing map, I think.
Yeah, I thought, I thought I had it, but then I couldn't find it here, but.
You don't know if there is one in there? Essentially, because of the challenges of this, of this project, there's, and the extensive remediation that needs to happen in the gravel pit area, you, we'd start development on the northeast side and kind of work that way. That would be phase one. That right now is, is, um, in a position to develop more so. So as far as timeline goes, I mean, we'd like to move as soon as possible, but we have to jump through all the city hoops, getting the final, uh, plat approval and, and, and all the engineering done for that, those phases.
Council member Shelton?
Thank you. On the gravel pit remediation, this is a question I hadn't really thought of until now, but, um, you've said that the number of units that are penciled out, so to speak, on this plan will help to cover the cost of, of the gravel pit remediation. You haven't done the geologics yet, right? That's, that's to come, right?
Not, not final geological studies or anything like that, but yeah.
I guess my question is the what-if? And, and that means, um, what if we find that the remediation, you're gonna have to dig down twice as deep to, to, to be able to prevent the settling on the areas where you're, you know, the, the what-if of, like, what if those costs balloon? What happens then? Can you just speak to that a little bit?
That is a good question. I think we'd have to, to, um, address those concerns internally first. The, the advantage of starting development where we are in the first phase is that those first phases are the single-family homes, or the, the bigger lots that the neighbors want more of. Um, and so if they're, we're not able to develop these, um, south lots as they are portrayed here, I think we'd have to take that, uh, when we cross that bridge. I wouldn't be able to say exactly what our options would be, but maybe Thomas would like to say something.
Yeah, we have met several times with the operators of the gravel pit. They have a lot of data that's not necessarily related to this application, so I know that's not like, um, answering your question. So obviously, going through something like this, we're trying to reduce the amount of unknown. And we know that as we go to preliminary and final more, a lot more studies and things need to happen. And so from everything we know today, we don't foresee any of that happening. There's nothing, there's a reason that they're mining here, is the material's really good. So that's why in these areas of gravel pits, redevelopment is very possible and it's usually not that risky. But it creates different challenges. So it's more the challenge of, um, the remediation is more related to like the spoils and how do you get rid of them? And material that just has to be moved off-site or reused on-site? And, um, the means and methods to do that are very standard and normal. A lot has to do with just the type of material, how it's placed, the monitoring, and then also the time. And so the nice part with this phasing is that gravel pit area is a lot further down the road and so time is very beneficial when it comes to preparing soils and making it stable for future development. And then the way that, what I like about this new plan is we're trying to minimize the amount of disturbance. There has to be a, a decent amount because of the gravel pit, but we're trying to minimize what happens up on the plateau. And then we're really just cleaning up the slope of the gravel pit to make it more usable down in the bottom. And then there is, um, work that the gravel operators are doing to get the bottom stabilized. And that'll all be worked out with staff and all of the reporting and the standards that engineering would require to make sure that, like, nobody here in this room, me more than anyone, doesn't want any house moving, settling. Because if that happens, I'm in a courtroom a lot faster than anybody else here in the room. And so obviously, like, that's one of our top priorities on a site like this is making sure the slope is stable, making sure the floor is stable. At this point, that doesn't really impact the rezone as much as, it'll impact the next steps through your guys' normal process.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that, uh, in what I've learned about Peterson Development and your work in our community, uh, you're good neighbors and you're gonna, you're gonna make sure things are done right. We appreciate that.
Council member.
Just a quick, a follow-up question again, I asked about the phasing and then I found it, but where, where I meant, because in the phasing, it doesn't say like a, a timeframe of what you're thinking of. And this is just for me to get an idea of when you're gonna be looking to get into three and four, which is that lower area, about how many, how long are we looking to get down there?
It's tough to say when we get to three and four, market conditions definitely apply. We'd like to get our excavators out there tomorrow. Have to make a few phone calls and, and open up the checkbook and I hopefully, Justin will be amenable to that. But, um, yeah, I mean, we, if phase one takes.
Let, let me tell you the reason I'm asking.
Yeah, I think realistically.
A lot of people, when they look at housing coming in and developments, they get the feeling of the houses are gonna be dropped tomorrow and there's going to be three hundred houses there tomorrow. Give me an idea of your best estimate of a phase one, then a phase two, then a phase three.
I think vertically on phase one, the soonest you're gonna see anything is spring of twenty-twenty-six, maybe fall of twenty-twenty-five, and then almost a year after that for each phase. And I think the gravel pit, even though those are phases three and four, there's a chance that those turn into five and six.
Right.
Just because of the nature of the agreements between them and the owners and some things that need to happen. And so those are definitely further down the road. So I think you'll see actually one, two, and maybe four and five, or five before you see three and four.
Okay, and that was kind of where I was going with this, that this isn't.
Potentially five years out to see anything in the gravel pit.
Okay, thank you very much.
Those house seeds don't grow as fast when you plant it, it's just, they just get water as fast, all right. To Taylor, anything from staff you'd like to add? Before we go to the public hearing?
All right, thank you, chair and council. Just a couple of things I wanted to touch on that they didn't have a chance to yet. One of the provisions of the PC ordinance allows a developer to propose their own bulk standards. Those are the motion from the planning commission, but they're ultimately approved by you at the city council. So, I wanted to make sure I talked about what those were. So here on the board, you can see what they've proposed. I'm gonna go to another slide. Uh, up in the top corner, you're gonna see what the standard are, if we didn't make any changes. And then everything you see highlighted in yellow is less than what is in the standard and the red is what the standard would be. Just kind of explaining what these are and why the planning commission didn't have a problem with them is it was really about reducing that front yard setback when you had a rear-loaded unit. All of the units would still have twenty-two-foot garages. It does allow for a slightly smaller corner setback on a couple of the lots. That's the, uh, twelve-foot rather than fifteen. And, oh, also, um, there are some where they only have a five-foot drive approach rather than a twenty-two-foot. Um, and that's for the units that aren't going to have a full driveway. They wanted to make it short enough that people couldn't park in them. Those would be, I believe, mostly, uh, in rear-loaded L.A. townhomes. Just wanted to make sure that you saw that. The planning commission reviewed this and they didn't recommend any changes, but you as the council can approve them, deny them, or, um, make changes as you see fit. Also wanted to talk about their fencing plan. The orange and red lines are existing fencing in the area. Those two purple lines are new six-foot masonry fences that will be constructed under the current plan. So they're open space, uh, they have two parks that are groomed and irrigated. Those are the one in the center and the one in the northeast portion of the development. Those lines that we can see are either eight or twelve-foot paved, uh, trails connecting those parks and, um, going past all the neighborhoods and the units connecting them to each other. And then you see there's some soft, uh, hiking trails that move up into that native open space, which is being preserved. They provided some examples of just, um, other units they've built and what we'd expect to see in this development. And then the one that's not a picture of home, that's just one of their exhibits from their design standards. And it's what that's saying is where you have a home, you're not gonna see that same elevation or the same colors adjacent to each other or across the street. So this will prevent cookie cutter where you go and, you know, the pink house is in the box and you never know which one's yours, I don't know how that song goes. So looking at the current future land use map, this, um, has several different uses, future park, public facilities, and very low-density residential. They're proposing parks in open space and low-density residential. Just how we see those go next to each other. Current zoning, there's several of them on here. There's very low, single-family residential, uh, public facilities and low-density, single-family residential. We're proposing with this one, just a uniform PC zone across the whole thing. So that's just the standards. I think we've kind of talked about all of that, um, except for, if this was approved tonight, what are the next steps? They would need to still come through with a major subdivision and site plan. Both of those would have, uh, public hearings at planning commission and then those final approvals would go a staff level. Sorry. Couple items to consider. First is one that we've heard as this went through planning commission as we brought it up last time is, um, planned community is supposed to be two hundred acres. The code does give the council the ability to approve planned community of any size. And so it's definitely within your purview tonight to approve a rezone of seventy-six acres, even though that's under two hundred. We also feel like it's worth noting that this project is surrounded by over a thousand acres of PC zoning, which is north of it and south of it. And it's, uh, kind of, being rezoned to PC would actually fit, uh, better, um, with that than maybe doing something else would be squished in between two different land uses. So here's a representation of that. You can see Copper Meadows above it is six-hundred-and-thirty acres and the Jordan Hill villages below it in the, uh, the Ranch Project, um, with the name Jones Ranch. And some of the other villages, you have six-hundred-and-five acres of, uh, PC zone property. And then just on the other side of U-111, there's another two-hundred-and-twenty acres of PC zone property. So this definitely is fitting with what is in the area that way. Uh, another item is, that will probably come up tonight, is, uh, the inclusion of commercial. The ordinance does not require commercial. It encourages, uh, it to have compatible land uses and commercial is one of those things that can be used for that. Uh, we as staff don't believe commercial is viable in this location. And we've heard time and time again that traffic's a concern and so driving traffic to commercial that we don't want in the project just seems like it's at odds with what the community has been asking for. Um, and it is also worth noting that there is commercial PC zone property within a quarter mile of this project, as we can see here to that nearest gas station. Uh, so we also wanted to take a look at the surrounding development because every time we look at one of these, it's really important to consider how it's going to fit into those, uh, neighboring developments. Jones Ranch is, uh, five-hundred-and-ninety-two acres, approved for five units per acre, but that's not the whole story. Immediately adjacent to this, Village Ten is twenty-five acres and that allows for between one-point-five and, uh, two-point-nine dwelling units per acre. So that's thirty-five to seventy-two units. Village Nine, which is also adjacent to this, has a density of ten units per acre with a minimum density there of five-point-six dwelling units per acre. So what that means is, uh, between four-hundred-and-twenty-six and eight-hundred-and-twenty-four dwelling units there for, uh, Village Nine. So when we look at those two combined together, your dwelling units per acre for Village Nine and Ten of Jones Ranch is going to be between four-point-five-six units per acre and eight-point-two-four dwelling units per acre, both of which are higher than the four-point-two, which this is proposing. Uh, here on this map, you can see that red line is roughly where, um, Copper Meadows sits adjacent to that Jones Ranch development. So you can see, uh, the bulk of the Jones Ranch would be adjacent to that Village Nine, which has the five-point-six to the ten dwelling units per acre. We also wanted to evaluate this, uh, next to the Sycamores development, which is to the north. So we can see all of those plats pulled out. Of those fourteen plats, six of the, uh, plats within, uh, the Sycamores actually have density, which is, uh, in excess of what we're seeing in Copper Meadows. But then some of those like nine, ten, eleven, they do have a less density. But kind of the separation between eight, nine, and seven, which are a little bit less density, and three, two, and the cottages is the same Stokes Lee Lane, which we're looking at further south in this project, and eighty-two-hundred South, which is also a collector road of that same width. So that has been used as a separation between these similar density land uses in the past within the, within the Sycamores project itself. We also look at the units located directly adjacent to the Sycamores. Two-thirds of those are at least eight thousand square feet. It's also mentioned that no new lot backs onto an existing lot. Uh, there's open space adjacent to the largest lots and then the construction of that masonry wall as well. Just showing that. That's showing that. The Sycamores is also approved as a part of the Jordan Hill villages project. And so here on this map, those colored boxes are the other PC zone properties within that Jordan Hills project, which was approved. There was one update, though, from the staff report that didn't make it into it. We didn't include the count for the Ivy Springs project within the Oaks at Jordan Hills project. When we included that, that actually increased the density of the Oak Hills calculation from three point nine five units per acre to four point four five. So with that change, Copper Meadows of the six PC zone properties in the area would actually be the second least dense. And that would increase the overall density of all those PC zones if we looked at them together by point zero two dwelling units per acre. And this map just shows that, so we can see how those compare. Yeah, so if I can, I don't have a mouse, but the at in Oaks at Jordan Hills is kind of right on top of it.
It's where Marie used to live.
We also looked at Hyde Point, which is located directly adjacent to this, zoned R one eight. That allows, on average, between three and five units per acre when we see in our one-eight developments. So those usually come in at low density residential, which is what this is proposing. Four point two is very similar to what we've seen for our one-eight projects throughout the city. So this is just taken from inside of Hyde Point. You can see they're coming up with basically the same four point two dwelling units per acre in that location. Then we can see how they're buffered and there's Stokes Lee, some open space and a six-foot masonry wall between those at the closest point. So you're probably looking at hundred and fifty feet or so between back walls of homes. And in between that, you have a collector road and a masonry wall and a six-foot fountain on the other side. So there is quite a bit of separation and buffering there. We've talked a lot about missing middle housing tonight. The applicant has. But this is kind of something that United States used to do really well until the thirties and forties. After World War Two came, we decided to build lots of subdivisions with large lots or dense downtowns or stacked flats and nothing in the middle. So that's led to a shortage of these housing types throughout West Jordan, Salt Lake County, Utah, and the nation as a whole. So there's really an emphasis in the planning theory right now to bring back some of these, to bridge the gap to homeownership and get people on that property ladder without just making their choices being housing which you can't afford or petrol renters that can't build equities. So we feel like this project does a good job of meeting some of those. It has cottage courtyards and sort of the cottage lots, which they're proposing, which is one of the reasons why staff was supportive of this. It's just an example. So ultimately, this went through the planning commission and it had three different motions. The planning commission did recommend approval by a vote of five to two with all three of those. I know I've been talking for a long time, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Whitelock is up first with a question.
Thank you. One for you and then probably the other ones for Mr. Davenport, who I might be in the back still. Yeah, there he is. So the first one is, if this were to pass tonight, they're being given entitlement for three hundred and eighteen units. But they nor we have got a comprehensive geotech study. So what happens if they get there and it's so expensive to remediate that site? That it just doesn't pencil out to use a big portion of the site? Do they lose units or are they still entitled and they get to move them somewhere else? How does that work?
Yeah, no, that's a fantastic question. One of the conditions that we recommended in the planning commission included as well is they're not entitled to the units just because they're being approved. They still have to meet every city ordinance, every development standard. If they can't, then they would either lose that unit or they'd have to propose a major variation and come back to this body, just like Jim did earlier tonight, to get approval from this body. So we're not just saying, you've got this map, go free willy. Like, they still have to go do the engineering and prove that they can build it. And if they can't build it like it's shown on the map because they don't meet code or it's too expensive, they have to come back to the city council and get approval for any changes.
And I just wanted on record that I really would have preferred, I know geotech studies are very expensive, but it would have given me more comfort had that been given to us with this packet. So I just want that on the record. So the question, and it took me quite a while today because I kept thinking UTI and I knew that was wrong. But when you change fields, often it's hard, sometimes with acronyms. But before I saw it up here, I finally figured ERUs. Now, here's my concern, Mr. Davenport. What were we at and what are we jumping to?
I think the report in the MDA explains the exact number. I don't have that with me right now, I'm sorry. But they're agreeing in this MDA that they will not develop until those ERUs are available. So I won't be caught in a situation where they want to develop three hundred homes, but I only have two hundred ERUs available. And they're gonna develop a hundred that I don't have available at that time. So they've agreed to pace their development with the number of water ERUs that are actually available in the city system for them to use.
And then I just want you to, I believe you told me this before, but I just want to confirm that I'm remembering right. Because this is up on the hill, basically, our hills on the Oakers. This water has to be pumped uphill. And so it costs more. Is that accurate for this area?
So we have two pressure zones on this. We have zone six and a zone seven. I don't have any water in zone seven yet. So there'll have to be facilities available for them to develop any unit in zone seven. And in zone six, that's our highest water zone. So that is the most costly zone for us to provide water.
So if we increase the ERUs, we're increasing the cost to the water fund, right? Am I thinking correctly?
This is a small number, but yes. The more people that we provide in zone six and over what we've already planned for, yes, our overall costs do go up.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
I have just a couple of questions. One is specifically about and I just lost it. It's, I think it's in paragraph eight. But it talks about the I just lost my train of thought. Hold on just a second. Let me find it. There it goes. Go ahead. Oh, I know what it was. Hold on.
Councilmember Green, still got it.
Why are we reducing Stokes Lee from wherever it's at, from seventy feet to sixty-seven? Why aren't we just leaving it seventy and calling it good?
I believe it's to match what's already been built there. So I think a standard right away is seventy for that. But the construction, the constructed piece of Stokes Lee is sixty-seven already, so it's matching that.
So why on earth did we allow, if our standard is if our standard is seventy, why did we allow sixty-seven? Anybody got any idea? Okay, here comes Mr. Langford. He knows everything.
No, I do not. The previous standard for collector roads was seventy. I don't remember how many years ago, but it changed from seventy to sixty-seven. So the old version or the old portion of Stokes Lee was built at the old standard. The standard's just had a little diet.
So where on the map are we going from seven? Where's the current construction in the the, just so I have an idea?
So I think that's the only one that shows it clearly where it ends is right there.
Okay. Alright.
Taylor, there was one more question. On the green space that will be east of Stokes Lee's, it will be separated by a masonry wall, correct? Because it looked like a masonry wall is on that end, right? And the HOA is going to be required to care for that? And is that just native green space? What is that? It's not groomed, right?
It's not groomed.
So the HOA is, okay. It's just gonna be a green space that's not really in the development. So if I became the HOA president, why would I think I'd need to take care of that? Just, it seems a little odd to me. That's all I have to say about it.
Alright, is there any other questions for staff before we go to the public? Alright, I'm not seeing any for now, so we will go to the public hearing. And I'm not gonna reduce anybody's time. Don't panic. I'm not a planning commission guy. I do want to know how many people, though, are planning on speaking, just so I know if I have to jump out for thirty seconds before running back in. If you're planning on speaking to this item, can you just raise your hand? I know there's gonna be several online, too. Okay, alright, we're good. I just wanted, if there was like two hundred, I wanted to just be ready. Go get my nodos, you know, some caffeine. Alright, I know there will probably be several online, but if you're in the room, we'll go to you first. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. You have three minutes to speak. We're just gonna keep it to three minutes for everybody, because if you're representing a group, that means other people in the group aren't speaking. We're gonna let everybody in the group speak. So three minutes a person, just like we always do. And you come up, give us your name. I would really be curious if your house abuts this property. If you want to mention that, you don't have to, but I would like to know. But give us your name, and if you live in West Jordan or if you live in the Sycamores, that'd be good to know, too. Or Hyde Point. I got it right. So with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this. And this is for ordinance twenty-four forty-seven, which is the master development agreement plan. And twenty-four forty-eight, which is the rezone and the general planned map. So go ahead and open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak, come on up. Just keep an eye on the corner of the TV where the three-minute window will be.
Jake McNich, West Jordan City resident. Thank you, Kaitlin, for addressing the geotech reports. You can ask Pamela Bloom what she thinks about geotech reports as her neighborhood has had sinking foundations. I think it's absurd that we would give entitlements without a geotech report on an unremediated gravel pit. It's absolutely ridiculous. I would like to inform you that we have a petition with just shy of four hundred signatures that reside in West Jordan and surround this neighborhood that states that this will adversely affect our neighborhood. If you'd like this, we have an electronic copy. Thirteen dash five C says that you can't do a PC zone if it's less than two hundred acres and adversely affects the neighborhood surrounding. This clearly does. Jeff talked about property rights. The property owner decided to let Reynolds use this land as a sand and gravel pit. And the city didn't use the bond remediation fund Reynolds provided. I have the copy of the permit. Because we are getting a development, because of that, we are getting a development that is not what the community wants. It's the only reason why this is not being zoned R one A and the reason that we are getting townhomes and carriage homes. Jeff said it himself. They have to put those there to pay for the remediation. This is not our fault and not our responsibility to make this profitable for the developer. The property owner made his land less valuable. The community wants a development more compatible to Hyde Point. Jeff talked about buffer zones, but there is no buffer between Hyde Point and the hundred and seventy-four carriage homes, none. Copper Meadows is not compatible with the existing neighborhoods. The average lot size of Peterson Development is three thousand square feet. It has townhomes in it and is another Greg Hughes development with narrow roads and not enough parking. All the PC zones in the adjacent areas in the direct vicinity have over two hundred acres and require a commercial aspect. Why are we treating this different than those that have been approved? Even if you use your discretion to nullify code thirteen dash five C dash five, you still have to go against the general plan and code that states on page forty-nine that the purpose of a PC zone is to integrate commercial and residential. This does not have a commercial aspect and is an abuse of the PC zone and does not follow the definition found in the general plan. Thirteen dash seven C dash six says in order for proposals to be recommended approval, it should not unduly impact the public infrastructure, upgrading the sewer to twenty-one inches, building a new zone seven water tank, doubling the planned ERUs. How is that not unduly impacting the public infrastructure? If that is not unduly if that is not unduly impacting the public infrastructure, what is? Another problem is the gravel pit is unremediated. This has dangerous slopes, have danger signs that line it from east to west, and they address it excuse me, by putting townhomes up to it to act as a retaining wall. This is not the remediation that people want or deserve. I would just ask the council tonight that this development be voted no to. It's absurd that this development would be put in this location. The HOA and the fact of the location is not going to make this affordable for anyone. It is not going to be affordable by any means.
Alright, thank you. That three minutes expires, that happens. Next up, come up and just, again, just give us your name.
My name is Nathan Voorhees. I live in Hyde Point, one house off of the boundary of Hyde Point. You know, I have a lot of feelings about this and I feel a specific way about how it's being handled and what's going on. But the thing that I feel the most strongly about is I feel like the PC use is only being used because of the slopes. Like, the PC use is so that you have that land so that you can use it for specific things. But I feel like the PC use is just being used so that it can handle the slopes and so that it can do the things and so that it can make the amount of money that it needs to to handle remediation. And I get that. But I don't think it's right. And I don't feel that it's appropriate. I also feel like all the carriage homes and like all the neighborhoods around us that were pointed out in the different fields, they're going to have cars on the streets nonstop or like on seventy-eight hundred south and Bacchus, we have cars lining seventy-eight hundred south because there's not enough parking for those same type of neighborhoods. And I realize that there is a small parking area in that field that is basically useless. And I mean, I can understand that that's there, but we're still gonna see people, even with the fence, parking on Stokes Lee, parking in places that aren't gonna be appropriate to it. The good thing about being zoned or being built similar to like the Hyde Point area is it means that even if you have multiple cars, even if you have multiple people living in a house, they not only have enough room to park, but there's actually enough roads to park on. Because of all of the green space, there's actually not enough roads to park on. And the green space isn't super usable. I mean, it is sloped space and it is just there to be able to fulfill the PC stipulation. So I really just want to make it known that I don't approve of the change. That the community, one of the things that I thought was interesting, the developer said, is that this is what the community wants. But we are the community and we have come out in force, probably more than almost any of your other projects, to speak about this isn't what we want. And so it really kind of felt underhanded to say that this is what the community wants when we are so active in coming out to speak against it. So I know that the amount of houses and the amount of homes is no different as if you were building, you know, point two acre size lots through the whole thing. But what is frustrating is you lose all of that road space and all the space that actually provides for that parking, that actually provides for that land to be usable instead of just large hills that don't actually help anybody. And so it's frustrating. And it's frustrating that I know that my family, I have five small kids aging from two to twelve, and I know that we're not gonna use any of that land space. So it's frustrating to say that this is what the community wants when we are out in force saying explicitly, this is not what the community wants.
Thank you. Anyone else? Lot more than two, raise your hands. So you don't have to line up or anything, but you can if you want to.
That's the one that works. Yeah, my name is Christian Crook. I live in Hyde Point with my family there. And so we're right across, not too far down from Stokes Lee. I really liked what Jake McNich said about the property rights. I thought that was all very good points. But to me, I think what's funny about this meeting is that, you know, the developer stated that this planned community designation meets the vision of the community. So the first thing we need to do is change the plan to meet the vision of the community. I find that kind of humorous. I find that kind of humorous, that to get this done, we have to change the plan. We have to change how that area is zoned. That tells me that it doesn't meet with the vision of the community. It doesn't meet what we want, the people that live out there. If the first thing you have to do is change the plan, and Councilmember Whitlock was already asking about returns, you know, what if the geotech study doesn't come through? What do we do then? Well, you know, that's a big problem. So it kind of reminded me of the Monty Python skit, where the guy buys the bird, he kills it, and before he walks out, he starts asking about the return policy for dead pets. I thought that was funny. If you haven't seen that, go watch that. But those are some things that I think are funny. The first thing, the first thing we got to do to meet the vision of the city is change the plan. It was mentioned earlier, so we came from the Sycamores and we moved to Hyde Point, and one of the reasons we left was because people parked on the streets. People would fly through the streets, and we had kids. It was a dangerous situation. I don't think it's a good idea to repeat that, just on the other part of the neighborhood. And I don't think anyone aspires to live in a carriage home. I know they have their place and they have their purpose, but it's not like this great vision of beating and providing wonderful homes for people. It's a stop on the way somewhere. So I think the best thing to do, in my opinion, is stick with the current plan and not amend it, not change it with like what has been proposed here today. And yeah, I don't think it helps our community. I don't think it helps our neighborhood. You know, we do have, there are carriage homes on, in the Maples neighborhood off 7800 and Bacchus. Our kids don't go to school with those kids. That's really not part of our community there in Hyde Point and in the Sycamores. It's a very different, it's different from where we live, so I don't think that's a comparison that you can make for this development. So yeah, I think we should vote against this, not to allow this, and thanks for your time.
I'm Blake Williams. I live in the Sycamores neighborhood. We've been there about 11 years. And, you know, this has been, it's been an interesting experience to be so involved here. I was also really involved when, you know, there were conversations about using land for the prison, and that was a really encouraging experience. This has been a little bit, a little bit sobering, to be honest. I feel like, including, you know, a kind of a gather, information gathering meeting at Nielsen's, I never got my frozen yogurt, by the way, and two different meetings here. This is the third. I feel like the public's come out and the citizens have come out and really shared how they felt about things, and I think it's been very clear that this isn't supported. And, you know, I talked to my wife about it the first time we came, and she jokingly said, well, Mark, we watch Parks and Rec, and she jokingly said, I bet this goes about three or four meetings until people just are too tired to come and talk. And I think if you remember the first couple of meetings that were held, there were a lot of people here, and there was a lot of passion, and there was a lot of frustration. And I think I stand here more frustrated than ever because I don't see a lot of change having been made. I feel like I asked my daughter to eat her vegetables, and she's just pushed the peas around and maybe put a couple more in her mouth. So that's frustrating to me. The process has been frustrating to me. And what I expect this outcome to be tonight, what, I'm reading the room, and I feel a little discouraged that this was maybe always going to happen from the beginning, and we just played a time game here, and that's frustrating. That, you know, I, this problem maybe isn't even appropriate, but it's my only opportunity to address you, Councilman Jacob. After the last meeting, you and I had a great conversation. I don't know if you remember it, but I do, and I appreciated it. And you said some pretty specific things to me, and I think we had a really collaborative conversation, which was great. And I asked, is this something that you approve of now? And you said, no, but I don't see any harm in giving them one more shot to bring something back and make a change. What harm does that do instead of? Oh, if they didn't make that change. And I feel like they've just moved the vegetables around on the plate. So that's what I expect to see. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Brian Warner. I've lived in West Jordan for 20 years. We moved into the Sycamores a long time ago. That's in the area that in West Jordan allowed to be built with, where you can't even park a truck on a driveway without it blocking the sidewalk. I know there's been a lot of legal issues about that, as well as people trying to get in control, the police trying to take care of that solution, and it's not happening. The, they also, I don't even know how, why, or how they're able to plow the area, because there's so many cars that are parked in the road there. Human nature is what it is. If you have a car, you need to work, then you have to drive, then, so, and you have to park that car somewhere. 7800 South is full of cars because of the development is not able to keep all the cars in that development, so they park on 7800 South by just east of Bacchus. It's going to, the exact same thing's going to happen here. You have all those, all those high-density houses that are on the east side of the development. We had lived in the Sycamores. We'd moved, we had moved away from there because of all the parking on the street. Now, we currently live on that road that'll go east-west, right from the new development straight into my house. That road that goes east-west will go, goes basically right into my house. I know the cars are going to start parking on there. They're not going to be able to put enough cars in that area because of the density is so high. They're going to start parking on all those roads, and so that's how it will impact me personally on there. A lot of the other lots, I'm looking at some of those lots, and I would love to buy one of those lots, because they, it looks like a great area, too. It's just the high-density area, that portion, is on the east side of it. That just means all those extra cars are going to commute to the existing development area and start impacting us in those areas. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. We should have that take a number system they have at bakeries, you know?
Hardy, I'm a resident of the Sycamores. I sent an email to the council comment email. I don't know if somebody can pull that up and put it on the screen? Is that possible?
We actually, the council rules has a, council, sorry. We don't allow applicants, which I realize this as a resident, but we don't allow applicants to add things separate from the packet in council rules, so I don't know how that works.
We do have, I did manage to pull that up real quick, and I know we have a similar graphic, I mean, I can't get it into the PowerPoint, but I know we have a similar graphic in the MDP that shows the radiuses that you were talking about. I think we've all seen it, so if you want to just talk to it. I've got, I've got your time paused, by the way.
Sure, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, just, so, I mean.
Yeah, so just to speak to that, I think the first point I want to bring up is, the Sycamores is divided up into three sections. There's a lower section, middle section, and upper section, each progressively with lots getting bigger and homes getting bigger. The highest upper section is zoned very low density, and there's only like 68 or 70 homes there. And as a realtor that sells homes in that neighborhood and in that area, the biggest challenge that we have when I help people in that upper section with the larger homes and the larger lots is finding the right comparable homes to justify the value with the larger homes on the larger lots, because there's so many other homes in the area that are maybe within a percentage of square footage that an appraiser would use to justify a value, but smaller lot, different type of feel and neighborhood style. And it almost feels like a bait and switch. If you take this existing parcel that is zoned very low density, and you're telling all the neighbors in the upper section of the Sycamores that you're on your own, go find your own way to justify and preserve your home's value, because we're going to put smaller lots and smaller homes right next to you. And so to do that, I think, is unfair. And the opening statement by Peterson, he said, show me where the public is being harmed. You have current homeowners in West Jordan, in the Sycamores, being harmed because their value will go down because smaller homes on smaller lots will surround these homes. There's a principle called regression in real estate, and that means you never want to be the largest home in the neighborhood. Well, when everybody built their larger homes on larger lots, they had the opportunity to not be the largest home, because there was acreage next to the Sycamores that could be built with the same-sized lots and the same-sized homes. And now you're telling them, sorry, you're on your own. So the public and the community will be hurt by this. In the general plan, ordinance number 2310, it states, an ordinance adopting the 2023 general plan and amended future land use map as the comprehensive and long-range plan for the city of West Jordan. And it states, whereas the city council finds it to be in the best interest of the public health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city to adopt the plan. This was just a year ago. The planning commission and all members of the city council, whether you were sitting on the council or your former counterpart, approved the plan, and that parcel that they're petitioning to change the zoning on was approved to remain.
Come on up.
Rob Peck, I'm also at the Sycamores neighborhood, and I hadn't organized anything to, you know, prepare today, I just heard about it today and I came down. But I also was with, in a couple of these meetings, we had three times as many people, and I also, like, neighbor, brother Williams over here, who's just kind of frustrated it's even gotten this far, because it's been very clear that, you know, we don't want this. So I just hope, I know, like, a few of you have mentioned that you'll be, well, the citizens, right? The citizens spoken, we want to, want to do what the citizens have asked, and like, council, you know, Councilmember Whitlock and Lamb specifically, you mentioned that, you know, let's do what the citizens have asked, and that's what we're asking, you know, that's what we want. Obviously, the builder wants something else, but we're asking you to say no to this. We, I moved out there to the Sycamores to be away from traffic, to be, you know, kind of get out in the outskirts, and then that's why I'm out there. Also, I mean, there's several, several points that I could, I could point to, but, I mean, the school is out there. I have kids in three different schools. They're all completely overcrowded. We already need, you know, more grade schools, middle schools, high schools out there. It's kind of ridiculous how many kids are crammed into, are the schools up there as it is. This would just, you know, add, add to that, you know, fuel to that fire. It's just, we're not built for that yet. The roads, like multiple people have mentioned that we have cars parked on both sides of 78th coming up into the neighborhood, because there's a few, you know, townhomes over on 7800 side. I think it's going to be the exact same thing on 82. 8200 South, I have to go through to get to my, to my neighborhood in the Sycamores, and it's a small road, right? There's, it's a small road. I have to go through there. If this is approved, by the time, geez, zone, or phase five is finished, that's going to probably 10x the amount of cars coming up that 82. They have, they're, so they have a little, there's a neighborhood built by Ivory Homes that's there, and then the upper Sycamores, we go in there, but this is far and above way more houses than both of these combined, and that, that road would be, you know, I don't know, it'd be just tough to get in and out and on to Bacchus, and it would just be frustrating, but, yeah, there's just multiple things. It doesn't conform with, you know, surrounding areas like we've, like we've discussed. You know, we don't want it as, you know, residents of West Jordan. And, yeah, all of these concerns you've heard, and again, it's just, it's just frustrating that I feel also that you're, it feels like, and I hope I'm wrong, I hope I'm wrong, I hope you're going to side with us as the residents, as the voters who voted you in. We don't want this, so please vote no. Don't be pressured into voting yes. Thank you.
My name's Collette Farr, and, sorry, this makes me really nervous.
We're harmless, don't worry about it.
I know, but my house abuts this property, so this will affect me. I hope each of you, some of you said, Councilman Sheldon said that he drove out there, I hope the rest of you have taken the time and opportunity to drive out there and look at this property. If you did, you would know and you would agree that this high-density proposal does not fit with the surrounding homes. Not only like what we have said before, it will rob us of our property values, our peace and security that by introducing congestion, crime, school overcrowding, and potential fire hazards. We haven't talked about that one yet, but there is already a fire danger from natural causes, and the developer is not planning on improving the steep slopes and increasing the danger by putting a dense population there and inviting them with a path through the weeds with a picnic pavilion. You know what will happen there. There'll be loud parties, smoking, picnic stoves, and fireworks, although they're illegal, but you know that's hard to enforce. So that's just to name a few. The narrow, congested roads will make it nearly impossible for emergency vehicles to get to that. That will definitely affect me. That backs my property. I know that the builder is telling you that there are some challenges to develop parts of this property. We have a challenging lot that we have made a beautiful sanctuary for our family, and if you drive through the neighborhood, you see that many of the homes in the upper Sycamores have challenging lots, but have made it work, and it's beautiful. So that being said, the builder might not be willing to develop this property, but a homeowner will. If you leave it zoned the way it is for larger homes, larger lots, homeowners will develop it the way that they want it to be. They talked about the parking in those, the lower part of Sycamores, and I have tried to walk through those subdivisions, but it's dangerous because the cars hang over the sidewalks and even into the streets because the drivers are not long enough. So the west side of West Jordan is already bearing a heavy load of high-density housing, even just the previous proposal. There are so few places that people can go to have a safe place for their kids or grandkids to play. Please do not rezone this and take that away from us and from future foundational families moving to West Jordan. I hope that since you're elected by us, the residents of West Jordan, that you will speak for us and vote no to rezone this property.
Farr, Kelly Farr, that's my wife, and she said a lot of the things that, you know, we've discussed and wanted to say. I just want to say that it's okay to leave the area very low density and have aspirations for others to move to that area. It took us over 30 years of hard work, sacrifice, and moving and slowly increasing where we could go to where we could build in the Sycamores. We looked a lot and looked at many areas of where to go, and one of the reasons we came to the Sycamores and bought the lot we did is because of the zoning and the zoning behind us being very low density. That's what we wanted. We started out in an apartment, and we moved to a small home, then we moved to a little larger home, and finally, we were able to, after all that time, move to our dream home. And now that is going to change with all the high-density that's going to be right behind us, and it does abut my back fence. The trail up that hill will be within feet of my fence. I've already had people jump the fence and try and break into my home. This is just going to increase more foot traffic, more people looking and peering down into my yard. I just want to say that- I just want to say that it's okay to give people aspirations, something to look forward to, something that they can look to as a family. And in the future, when they've put in their time, when they've put in their, their hard work, thousands of hours of overtime, to be able to move to a place like that and have a bigger lot where my family and my grandchildren can come and enjoy. It's okay to have the American dream still. Not just to have a little home or an apartment, but to have the home that you've dreamed of and worked for for your life. We would ask you to vote no. Leave the zoning very low. Let there be a spot left that people can aspire to and have their American dream. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Josh Schreiber. I live along Cricket Lane. And, um, you know, this is the last great frontier in the valley here in West Jordan. If we looked at the maps that you guys pulled up, uh, what abuts us to the west is mountains. This is it. This is the last of the building that gets to happen in West Jordan and in the valley here. Moving to a, a high-density type development really ruins what we want to have, not just in this community, but in, in the valley in general. Once we put that in there, we don't get to undo it. We're going to have buyer remorse if we put this low-density housing in there. I want to speak to the future homeowners that would move in there today if they were to buy today. Having raised three kids in the almost quarter acre lot that I have, those individuals are not going to have the experiences that I had. Their kids are going to say, Dad, why don't we have a yard big enough to throw a baseball? Dad, we can't play catch with a football because our yard's not big enough. Dad, I can't ride my scooter down the sidewalk because the cars are hanging out. Dad, when you went jogging down 8200 South today, I saw you almost got hit because you had to walk around so many different cars that were parked along there that hadn't been parked down there before. The people that buy these houses are going to come back here and complain and say, why didn't you do this correct the first time? And so I admonish you to do the right thing today, not necessarily for my community, but for the community that's going to buy in there in the future. Those kids, those families, they want to be raised in homes and, and subdivisions that are conducive for good families to be able to play ball in the yard, have, have barbecues in the backyard. None of this does that. I respect that Peterson Homes is trying to do something beautiful. They've done beautiful developments in other areas in the valley. This one is not going to be one of those developments. The Jones families, the Petersons are going to be disappointed at the end of this development if this moves forward. They would not have their own families buy homes in this development. I've got my three kids are going to be first-time homebuyers in just a couple of years. They will not want to buy a home in this area, even though it's next to that. It doesn't provide the infrastructure within a home and a yard that we're used to. And I admonish you to please vote no on this proposal and let this neighborhood be developed as it was originally designed so that you can have people tell you, good job, Zach Jacob. You voted the way that I would have wanted you to when the time was right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Teresa Crook. I live in Hyde Point, formerly lived in the Sycamores. So I have seen both sides of this area and what it reflects. I was born in West Jordan. I was raised in West Jordan. At the time, we lived off 90th and 3200 where there were open fields. We had lots of room to grow. So I remember driving, learning how to drive on Bacchus Highway when there were no homes out here where we live. That was, I remember in my youth having open fields and being able to run around and throw baseballs and go play football and do all those things. We moved out west because I wanted that experience for my kids. I wanted them to have the open land. I wanted us to have space. We are as far west as you can go in West Jordan. There is no reason to go further west ever. There's no schools, there's no shopping, there's, there's only homes out there. I don't understand what high-density housing out there in that area provides. There's no jobs out there. There's no reason to be out there in a high-density development because there's nothing that you're going there for. The wide-open spaces are what people want. We want to have those opportunities for our future kids. And to hear that 8200 South is big enough to handle any traffic is absolutely ridiculous to me. Our kids walk along 8200 South to get to middle school? I don't want endless traffic. I don't want cars parked along that street where our kids have to run in between cars to cross the street to get to school, both morning and afternoon. It's unsafe for our kids. I don't want cars parked along. The reason we moved from the Lower Sycamores is because we had cars parked all along. We had nowhere to park in front of our own house. We could not park our own car in front of our own house. I've looked up all of your addresses as I was sitting here in this meeting. I know every one of you lived, live in a development that has been there for many years. You don't see this as an issue. But where we have these open fields, I'd like to have you ponder the question. If this was your neighborhood, would you want this right on the other side of your own neighborhood? And I think there's lots of people in this room who would gladly trade spots if you really.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the city council for giving us time. My name's Jared Hodgkin. I'm HOA president in Hyde Point. I appreciate the, the work and the effort that Peterson Development Group put into refactoring their original plan. And that, that doesn't go unnoticed. I appreciate a lot of the concerns we listened to and they, they did address many of them. One thing that I have to reflect with the rest of my community here that this area does not fit well with the cottage homes idea. I like cottage homes. I stayed in one in St. George just a couple of weeks ago. And they can be really great. I parked two cars right in front of the garage of that particular place because there was space to do so. What I would beg you, please consider, do not approve the judgment, the adjustments that they're requesting for the, what do you call those? The, the boundaries, the setbacks. Thank you. Please don't do this. Uh, once that's done and what those are in place, there is no undoing it, like was mentioned before. We've got that all over the place in the Lower Sycamores where the driveways are too short. And like was also mentioned, uh, you know, master plan communities aren't bad. There are beautiful master plan communities. And this one would probably be okay, except that because there's nowhere to walk to and there is no public infrastructure for transportation, every member of that community who is an adult is going to have to drive, including any teenagers that live in that community. There is not enough space. It's not that I have an opinion about whether or not you're allowed to park on a street or not. Like, that is going to happen, whether we like it or not. But the, but if we approve these adjusted setbacks, there will be no other option for them. There will be no parking in their driveways because they won't, a five-foot driveway, that's absurd. A 15-foot driveway won't fit my Honda Accord. That, that's, that's not acceptable. We cannot do this. Please, as a city council, do the right thing. Do not approve the adjustments to the setbacks, especially if that's the only reason that they're going for the, um, PC zone is to get around some of these limitations. That, that's, I, I get that it's got a pencil. They need to, it's, they gotta be able to make their money and whatnot. But if we approve this, we're not going to grow more land. Those homes, those driveways are never going to get longer. And those setbacks are never going to get wider again. It'll be permanent. It'll be there. We'll have to deal with it for 70 years in the future. Thank you.
My name is Matt Hofer. I live on the very west side of Hyde Point. So now I would just like to kind of reiterate and, and voice my opinion that we're opposed in our community to this development. The developer asked a question earlier about which rights are infringed. Well, at a basic level, the right to the pursuit of happiness. This does not make our community happy. We, uh, my wife and I moved into Hyde Point. We were some of the last to move into Hyde Point four years ago. And we moved from an area that backed up to a high-density area. And that was one of the main reasons that my wife and our four children decided to move out here. We, as was mentioned earlier, we looked at the zoning and things that were going to be happening later on. We knew that there, at some point, would probably be some development behind us there. But now we're changing that. And it's different than what we originally thought. And it takes us right back to where we were four years ago, which is what we were trying to move away from. So again, I just want to ask the council members, as you think about this and as you, you know, think about the, the residents of this community, this is not what we want. We oppose it, as has been said multiple times in multiple meetings. We appreciate neighbors. We want neighbors. But we are concerned, I'm concerned about the effects that this high-density will have on us. I've seen it. I lived for 12 years in my previous home. I saw things develop there. I saw the changes and challenges that came from those high-density units that were put in, and the result was not good. It was a, a negative result on my family and my children, which again is why we decided to move out west, where the zoning was set up for homes similar to mine that were, that were larger, larger lots, gave my children a safety and the ability to be outside without concern and to have, and to have a childhood that they deserve and that I've worked for. So I, I just ask the council to, to hear the members of the community as we say that we, we do not approve. We do not want this to go in behind us. There, again, will cause many challenges, as has been mentioned multiple times already this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nate Turner. I live on Cricket. Thank you guys all for what you do and the time you're taking and the attention you're giving us tonight. I'm going to be short. I went to the first few meetings when we had it as a neighborhood. We probably had well over 100 people there. And they said, please, 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 keep the fight going. As soon as you let off, they're just going to take over. The last thing I want to see is the residents get bullied into something so that a developer can make money. There are so many people that petition was signed. There may not be a lot of bodies here, but please know that the majority of that neighborhood, my neighborhood, our neighborhood, does not want this in there. We moved there because we were smart enough to know and see the zoning and understand the zoning and understand that that's what our future was going to look like, not to be changed so somebody else could make some money. So please, please, please be the voice of reason. I thank you so much. I lived in the Lower Sycamores. Driving's a nightmare. I used to drive a plow truck from Murray City. Once you get cars on the road, it's a nightmare. You can't do it. You guys are just, we're just trying to move that around. And so we can't plow here, we can't plow there. And then it's going to make our whole neighborhood not get plowed, not get taken care of. Please just be the voice of reason. You guys were voted for the, by the people, for the people. Please be the voice of reason. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Hofer. I first of all, I want to say thank you for all of your time. I know this meeting has run, run long and we appreciate your guys' time listening to everybody's arguments. I agree with many of the things that have been said. I'll try not to repeat any of them. I'm coming at you as a mother and a former educator. And as a mother, I've been able, I've been blessed to be able to stay home with my kids for the majority of their life so far. And I can tell you that we drive down 8200 South multiple times a day. So congesting that area is going to cause many disadvantages and stressors on the families that live there because we have to commute back and forth anytime that our kids need anything or to take them to and from school. I also have a middle schooler that, that walks along 8200 South. So that congestion is a real concern for me. We just don't have the infrastructure for this many homes in this small of a space. And that's why it's zoned that way. So I would request to leave that zoning the way that it is as well. My other concern, I heard talk about amenities. I haven't heard about any amenities that are going to benefit our community so far that the development has provided. They've talked about how they're not going to groom the green area. There's not going to be anything given back to this area and it's going to cause congestion and a lot of problems in addition to that. I also know that as developers and for people who don't live in that neighborhood, they don't necessarily have to consider the effects that this overcrowding will have on our already overcrowded schools and the impact that that will have on our future leaders that are our children that we're raising in this area now. Like my husband said, we moved from an area that was overcrowded, over congested, hoping to give our kids something a little bit better. And we have worked and sacrificed in order to provide that for our kids. So please hear the voices of the people here tonight and know that we have valid concerns. And I agree that I'm not against high-density housing. I just feel like it's out of place in this area. And we purposely moved to a lower-density area to avoid the problems that this will cause. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room? I'd like to address the, the council.
My name is Michael Bruff. I am a resident of the Sycamore subdivision. I bought my lot nine years ago. Something that sets me apart, different than a lot of the other people in this room, is I am a builder. I've been a builder for 25 years, built over 2,000 houses. I know what it's like. I've been in Peterson's shoes when you have to put something together to make it work. The only way to do that is to add more houses. If it doesn't pencil out because of the acreage, doors per, doors per acre, you turn to what they have proposed. There's no other way around it. That's what it is. They got to clean up the area. They got to clean up the field. I get it. I've done it. I've been there. And it's hard. If you asked all of the people in this room if they kept the same layout that the Sycamores currently has and did that adjacent to this property, the same phasing of the acreage, the same phasing of the top lots, which I live in, in the estate lots, phase 12, you would have no problem. Not a single person in this room would balk at that idea. So why are we here? Are you listening to your constituents? Your ruling tonight will determine whether or not that is the case. And the reason why is it all comes down to making it work. Peterson is doing a good job or trying to do a good job with what the piece of property is. That's the problem. Sometimes in the valley, there's more profitable areas. There's some that aren't. Ultimately, when it comes down to it, this piece of property, the only way to make it work is trying to do what they're doing or don't do it. And that's what your community is telling you tonight. Don't do it. It doesn't, it doesn't pencil out. They've talked about fire. They've talked about safety, crime, property. I am frankly tired of the parking that exists off 7800 South off from Bacchus Highway. Because everybody in that DR Horton subdivision parks on 78th and you have massive problems with the plow truck. You've all seen it. You know about it. So why are we doing more and more higher density? This isn't a high density, it's a low density, but it's more density than what the Sycamores is currently zoned at. So why are we changing it? Your community doesn't want it. Your ruling tonight, if you do decide to rule on it, will determine in our ears what you guys want versus what your community wants.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room? Let's see, we got one more. Is there anybody after him? Just so I, anybody else who hasn't spoken? Just trying to get an idea. That's all. Okay, we do have a couple online, I think. So we'll go to that next. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. My name is Richard Hickson. I'm a resident of West Jordan, actually in the Hyde Point neighborhood. I just have to say, I agree with many of the sentiments that have been shared here today by, by everybody. Listening to the comments, particularly from one councilman, I'm frustrated at what may be predetermined outcome here. Living in Hyde Point, it's, it's beautiful neighborhood. My wife and I stumbled on it on accident one day when we were looking for a new home to buy. We thought this is a beautiful area. We thought that this was a nice area with plenty of land. And now knowing that further west of us, it just, West Jordan basically ends. That's how you're going to finish West Jordan? You're going to put in higher density housing? It's, it's very frustrating to think about. And I, I would dare say, I have no adverse opinions about Peterson. I think that they can make beautiful homes. This could be an opportunity to make nicer homes there, rather than pushing into higher density homes that they're looking to propose. So overall, just to sum up my, my quick statements, I, I'm asking the council, in addition, in echoing the same sentiments here, that you vote no against this, and vote no against the adverse changes that we as homeowners in West Jordan will feel as a result of what you decide to do tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes everybody in the room. If you haven't spoken yet, and you're going to want to after the online comments, that's fine. I'll come back to the room when we're done with the online comments. Mr. Anderson, I assume we have several?
Yeah, currently there are 62 people online, nine of whom have raised their, 10 now have raised their hand.
All right. I'll let you determine the order that we're going to grab these from. So go ahead and.
I'm just going to order of what's on Zoom right now. So the first four will be a profile named Eldon. The second one will be a profile numbered 258.
Let's do one at a time. I can't remember that far now. So Elvin was the first one? Okay, if your profile on Zoom is Elvin, go ahead and unmute and give us your name, if that's not your full name.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time tonight to, to listen to us as a community. My name is Eldon Reed. I live in the Sycamores area, have for the last seven years. I won't take much of your time because everything that I've talked to, or that has been talked about by everybody before me is exactly how we feel as a community. I agree that Peterson is trying to make a nice development, but as has been said, it does not fit in this neighborhood. Like Michael Bruff mentioned, if it was to fit the way that the Sycamores are currently built, we would not have any problem with it. But it does not fit in this community. You've heard overwhelming support of not approving this. And I would hope that you would listen to all of us to understand that us as your constituents do not want this. We do not want you to change the zoning. That's why we moved here. And please listen to our voice and please vote no on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who's next?
Next one is the profile 258.
Okay, if your name is 258, I'm just kidding. If your Zoom profile is 258, go ahead and unmute and you'll have your three minutes.
My name is Megan. I live in the Sycamores Development. And I haven't attended the other meetings, but I've listened to what others have said. And I don't believe that this is in the best interest of our community. I drive, I make a 40 minute commute every day. And I drive along Bacchus and I always admire just the view in the mountains. I don't know if anybody else feels the same, but I would rather see those than townhouses going up. I also heard somebody else mention schools. There's not very many schools in this area. Adding all of those homes into this area will magnify that. There are, I believe in some classrooms, up to 34 kids in one classroom and one teacher. My daughter being a special needs, she tends to get lost in some of those. We also have walked through and driven through the lower part of the Sycamores, where the streets are extremely narrow. You have people who park on the street. Their vehicles don't fit in the driveway. You have teenagers that drive, so multiple vehicles for one house. If there's cars on the road during the snowstorm, the city plows will not come through. I don't know if any of you have talked to any of those workers that drive here through the winter, but I'm sure that it's frustrating for them. School buses have a hard time getting through there. Just even normal people living in their community having issues driving home in the evenings or driving to work. I would just say that we've elected officials to speak for us on our behalf. And I'm going to assume that the Peterson group, I don't believe any of them live in this neighborhood. And it's just more of like a money thing for them. And we live here. I believe some of you council possibly live here. But we are asking you to please listen to us and to vote no, as we have spoken over and over again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up?
Yeah, the next user is the profile Bo.
Bo?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead.
All right. Thanks so much. So hello, everyone. My name is Bo Swenson. And I'm sitting here before you today as a West Jordan native and homeowner in Hyde Point. I'll express my concerns regarding this proposed high density housing. And I just first want to echo everything everyone before me has said. And while I understand the need for more affordable high density housing, I believe this particular project will have a significant negative impact on our community. High density housing, while necessary, should be put in the correct areas, not where it is at now. The increased traffic and parking congestion on 8200 South will undoubtedly diminish our quality of life. Our quiet residential streets will become a busy thoroughfare, disrupting the peace and tranquility we currently enjoy. I'd also like to say that I just completely disagree that 8200 South is capable of handling a large and sudden influx of traffic. There are already a lot of cars consistently driving down this road and will, and it will be completely overwhelmed. Numbers may say differently, but they can't speak for what it's like to actually drive on this road daily. And so I would love to point that out. And then moreover, the development doesn't align with the character of our neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods. We've worked hard to create a community where families can thrive, where children can play safely, and where property values are protected. The proposed high density housing, with its potential for increased noise, crowding, and different lifestyle choices, threatens to undermine this carefully cultivated environment. I urge you to reconsider this project and explore alternative solutions that will promote responsible growth while preserving the unique character of our neighborhood. They say the community wants this or is okay with this, but then explain the massive amount of signatures and people here tonight who have spoken against it. Thank you for listening and thank you for your reconsideration. Please vote no.
Thank you. Next up?
Next user is a gentleman by name of Josh Sikowski.
I know him. Go ahead, Josh.
He's unmuted.
Josh, you should be able to go ahead.
You guys, can you hear me?
Now we can hear you. Go ahead.
Oh, good. Okay. Hey, I'm, I'm calling in from Kansas City tonight and just make a comment to, to everybody there. I am worse than the developers. I am an apartment developer. So I'm what nobody wants in an area. So my, my reason for calling in is mainly to provide, I guess maybe a commentary on the sand and gravel pit. I know the sand and gravel pits are regulated by Salt Lake County. And my question to the city council and my frustration is that I know that sand and gravel pits overall, when they're, they're built, what they do is they overexcavate them. They're allotted a certain amount of grade that they can take out. And they go way over that. And it is part of the permit requirement that the, the individual for the sand and gravel pit remediate that sand and gravel pit when they're done. The problem that I have is that they didn't do that. There was no remediation done. And the county's fine with that. The county and the, the governor are the ones that are asking for this higher density and these, these homes to be built. And I agree that we need median housing for, for our kids. But my problem is not with Peterson Development. My problem is that the city didn't push back on the county and force the original user of that sand and gravel pit to remediate it. If they would have done so, then when Peterson bought this property in the first place, then they would have been able to do the development that we are asking for. So my pushback is more to West Jordan City. Why did we not push back on the county to force the original user of that sand and gravel pit to remediate it properly? They've done nothing. So, you know, I, I think that we do have another alternative here, that we push back on the, the county and force the original developer of that sand and gravel pit to fix it. That's my comment.
Thank you, sir. Next up?
Next up is profile Soraya Hurd.
Soraya. Go ahead and unmute.
This is Soraya. Can you, can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Go ahead.
Awesome. Sorry, we just flew in from, from Australia. So I'm just making it. So I kind of second all the things that have been said. Sorry, I'm out of breath. I was running upstairs. Give me a second. So the biggest problem I have is the parking. There's not going to be enough parking, like Brother Bruff had said. Sorry, we'll say Mr. Bruff. Sorry. The parking up 7800 South is a nightmare. It's all from what's left over from the condos and townhouses and apartment buildings. And so the parking's a big issue. The other is, when we bought this house, we did notice the zoning that was supposed to go over there before we bought our house. And it wasn't supposed to be all these little houses. So I think that's the biggest concern. So really, I just wanted to iterate what everyone else has said, and that we are the constituents and we're asking that you listen to us because we are the people and we've asked that you listen to what we're saying. And I haven't heard anyone say that they are in favor of it. So it sounds to me that the majority, you know, of people are asking you to listen to us, the people. And we should be, you know, this, this is our land. This is us talking to you and saying, please listen to us. We are all saying no. I haven't heard anyone here say, please do it, except for Peterson Homes. And I'm sure that they are a great builder, but this is not the project for them if they can't make this work. The other thing is that they keep saying this property is hard to deal with. But if you come into this neighborhood, the Sycamores, and you see all the properties that were really hard to deal with, that these people have loved their property and have made it the most that they could. I have just one behind me that's a whole mountainside. And they have built it as a mountainside with beautiful trees and have put a lot of time, effort, and money into it and have made it absolutely beautiful. So I'm going to say that this property is property that can be used and that is valuable. And if you would, maybe someone else can take it over, but this isn't probably the property for Peterson, if it doesn't work for their numbers. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the profile Jonathan Jex.
Jonathan?
Yeah, good afternoon or good evening, everyone. I'm actually here with my wife. So I guess that makes 63 people online. And had we been in the room, that room would be overflowing with all of us that are online. I just want to echo the sentiments that have been shared before. We do not want this. This is not the appropriate development. And you know, we, we already struggle with, you know, first responders getting out here when we need them. I live, you know, right behind a park that we get a lot of outside visitors from. Building another neighborhood will bring more visitors to, you know, our parks, our views, our walkways from the outside. And that's additional, you know, additional population that this area just can't support. We're in favor of, you know, the council voting no on this. And we ask you as your constituents, that you vote no. This is not for this area.
Thank you. Next?
Next is the profile Jazzy.
Basketball player, no doubt. Just kidding.
I wish.
Jazzy. Go ahead.
My name is Jazzy Swenson, and my family recently moved back to West Jordan and bought our forever dream home in the Hyde Point neighborhood. My husband and I worked hard and sacrificed to buy this home for our kids. Like many who bought and built their homes here, we did not anticipate to be surrounded by high density crowded housing. It doesn't make sense for you to add high density in with low and very low density housing, other than to make more money at the downfall of keeping our neighborhoods low. There are already townhome developments that have started going in and are in on 7800 South and Bacchus Highway. And the traffic there has already increased. 8200 South will be busy. Right now, you see that nobody is really parked on 8200 South. With all these high density homes, some that can't park in their own driveway, it will be filled with random parking, their residents and guests. 8200 South is not just a road. Some people's backyards are against this road, so it does highly impact those residents. Please think about them before justifying the traffic on 8200 South, that it cannot sustain. Our neighborhood is very family friendly. Families know each other. And this is the kind of neighborhood people love to see because there is safety and community interaction. My son rides his scooter and walks around all over the neighborhood with his friends. He has several friends that live here and they all play safely together. Increasing traffic of cars and people possibly take that away from our kids. There are many other environments you guys can add this plan, but let's keep this neighborhood a neighborhood. I would like to believe that West Jordan cares about their residents and want to keep our families safe. Can we please stop focusing on what might bring people more money and really think about the people in the community? I ask you to consider not adding high density housing, Copper Meadows, and keeping our homes safe, family friendly, listen and respect the concerns of those of us who chose to buy our home in West Jordan. We love West Jordan, it's home. So again, please keep our neighborhood low and safe for our families and most importantly, our kids. Match the surrounding development with forever homes, not temporary housing opportunities. How many of these developments could be turned into rental properties? And please stop trying to make West Jordan, Utah, California. Lastly, I just want to add that there was a petition started by Jake on change.org. And we have 380 verified signatures from the community to stop this development. So please join us, residents, and let's all vote no together on this development.
Thank you. Next?
Next profile is Amber White.
Amber, go ahead.
Hello. Thank you guys for even staying this late. I was there the first time and then couldn't make it because I've got my kids with me. But same as everybody else, honestly, I'm okay with homes being there. Yes, for the families. But can we think about the size of the homes like everyone is trying to get at? The parking is the biggest issue. It's already, like I live in the Hyde Point. Parking's not crazy, but there's, with our economy right now, more than one person, family is living in these homes. That it means not just two cars per family. That means there's six cars for each family home. And that's where it's getting hectic and parking is getting overcrowded. Again, I agree with everybody else. So it sounds like with the zoning, like Josh said, if Again, I agree with everybody else, so it sounds like with the zoning, like Josh said, if we have to start from square one with the city and. Figure out the zoning all over again. Then we need to do that, so again, please vote no, and let's start from scratch all over on this, thank you.
The next is profile Galaxy S nine plus.
Okay, if you're on a Samsung. This would be you.
Can you hear me?
Well, you can hear you, go ahead and give us your name.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to reiterate, I agree with all of my neighbors here. I, my name's Mandy Hamburg, I live in the middle, middle of the sycamores. An issue you've already heard about is parking in the lower sycamores where. Family homes, there isn't enough part space to park cars in the driveway and the streets are just overcrowded. In the middle area where I'm at. We're starting to see more issues like what was just said about multiple families living in a home and there's lots of cars. And with the higher density proposed, especially with the cottage homes. I. I have a hard time believing that many. First time home buyers are going to want to choose to live there. But prices alone for the townhomes going in north of the sycamores. Is already really high. So I just worry that. As was previously stated, it's going to end up becoming a renters community. And there's going to be a ridiculous influx of cars and parking along Stokes Lee. All the way through the sycamores and down eighty two hundred south. I, I'm not opposed to development. Or even. Kind of intermixed density in development, I. I just think that this development would have been better suited for the area where High Point is since it is closer to the. More major streets like Bacchus. Having them reversed. As previously stated, is just going to wreak havoc with traffic. And post safety risks for kids walking to the school. And just families trying to enjoy the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more online, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, a few more have signed up. The next is user Mariana Hankins.
Hi, yes, I just wanted to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I'm not going to repeat what everyone says, but I strongly agree with what everyone said. Twenty seven percent is the number that's risen on multifamily loans that's been given out for homes. That means that people that are buying homes isn't just a couple, it is. Multi-families, parents with their kids, siblings. So you're not looking at one to two cars, you're definitely looking at more cars. And also, I wanted to give kind of. I'm a little nervous, sorry, but. I, being close to my forties, have a lot of friends that. Are really disheartened right now that don't necessarily live in this. Neighborhood, but they're going out shopping and they're looking for homes. And they're having to go from rental to rental to small family homes. These four hundred dollar homes, five hundred dollar homes. That aren't forever homes, they're looking for a place to raise their families. They're looking for places to create unity, to find a community like I have. I love my neighborhood, I love my neighbors, it's a great place to be and it's forever. The homes that Peterson Homes wants to build is not forever. They are not homes that people want to bring their grandkids to and play in the backyard. One of the meetings that we had before. We brought up the concern of the yards and, oh, well, there's going to be a park right there. Who wants their kid playing in a park at ten o'clock at night when they can safely play? In the backyard hide and seek at ten o'clock at night. So I just ask that you please consider this. My husband and I have lived here for four years. We were very grateful to find this home and the only reason why we chose this home is because. Everything was so close knit, like the development that's being built on the north. The the development out in. I forget what it's called, but pretty popular out down south. But they're just really close knit and it's trafficky, and so when we came up here and this home was for sale, this was the dream home. It had the yard, it had the, it had the community, it had. The developments that we had reviewed that this was going to be the place that it was going to be. And we liked it so much that we even talked about. The place next door, the land that you guys are talking about, we would purchase a land. And build our dream home and be there forever. Why not give those individuals an opportunity? The constant homes that are being built all over the state, let's give them.
I don't think that meant to cut off, that cut off. Was that three minutes? We didn't start a timer on that one.
That's my error, I didn't start.
All right, are you still there?
Let me ask her unmute.
Hey, one second, sorry about that, we. Yeah, we we forgot to start the timer, so we'll give you another minute, sorry.
Oh, you're fine, I I was, I was pretty close to being done, I was just saying to please build something unique for the people that are looking. Because people that are looking right now are really disheartened at what's going on in Utah as a whole. They're looking for their forever home and it's being, becoming something difficult to find. So give them that on the mountainside, the mountainside should be a quaint, quiet place. So that's just something to consider is the quaint, quiet place in Salt Lake where someone is trying to escape to. So I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you. All right, here we still got a couple.
The next is Profile Andrew Riley.
I'll assume that's your name, Mr. Riley.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Awesome, so I want to come at this with a different take and a different look, so I'm twenty four years old and I actually grew up in sycamores, I. Still pretty much live there with my parents, we live in the middle section of the sycamores and we've been there for seventeen years. Ever since I was seven, so. My take is a little bit different, I've heard a lot of my parents' friends talk. A lot of my friends' parents talk as well. About this rezoning and I am also against it as living, living as a kid in that area. That place should be a place where kids can roam the streets, play basketball in the streets. Play field hockey in the streets, it should be a place where there's no speeding cars. That are going up and down the street with lots of traffic, lots of congestion. They should be able to have the the childhood that I was able to have growing up there as well, that's what I hope for that place. It's also a place that my parents are going to stay for a very long time. It is their forever home as of for right now. And it's a place that where I want to go and take my grandchildren to because. I know it's going to be safe with them as well. So I hope this is a, it's a little different take than what you guys have been hearing all night, but. I also agree that this rezoning should not be done. We should leave it the same as how it was proposed when my family first moved in there. And it it should have never even been a question to have this be rezoned. It's why we moved there in the first place and it's why we want to, why my parents want to stay there forever as well, so. I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to everyone here and and all of our thoughts and please vote no council for this rezoning.
Thank you.
Next is user Kevin.
Kevin, give us your last name too, if you could.
My name's Kevin Burningham.
Thanks, Kevin.
So. I can come at this from a little bit of a different viewpoint from most of the people that have spoke. So. I work in public service, I serve our community. In public safety. So. I get the opportunity to work in areas that have high density. I run calls in. In Harriman, which you guys have seen how much identity is out there. Now South Jordan. It's the same. And with this high density becomes a massive increase in in the volume of calls for police and fire. So I'm seeing it from a different, different standpoint from you guys. This is going to increase, increase West Jordan's call volume immensely out in this area with all this high density. They're going to be running more calls. Inevitably, you're going to have multiple families moving into these areas and with that comes more medical. More fire responses and more police. There will be more theft and I know. From twenty years in the, in my career that I see, I see the other side of this that nobody sees. And it's not a good thing. And I can attest to this. And it's only going to hinder our wonderful West Jordan out here on the west side. That we all moved out here to get away from these, these types of things. And on the other flip side. Eventually, West Jordan's going to need to hire or to build another fire station out here and that costs a lot of taxpayer monies. You have to fill those seats for both fire and police, so that's going to, that's going to increase our tax taxes. For the city and the residents. And I just hope that you guys can look, look at it from another angle. That with more high density growth is going to cause more problems overall for residents and for our city. And for the public service, the people that that serve our community and and. Put their lives out there to serve our wonderful residents. So I just hope you guys can kind of look at it from that angle. And please vote no, because from my experience. It is not good to pack in a lot of people, a lot of homes into a smaller area. It just doesn't go well. So appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, do we have any more online?
One more, user Michael White.
Michael White. Go ahead, Michael.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Well, you can hear you. Okay, so I'm just like the rest of my neighbors, the rest of the community, I'm opposed against this. I understand where they're coming from, the builders trying to make money and and develop. In in another area. I think what they're doing, they're going about it wrong. I think they could. Make it better, I I'm all for another community if we could make it right. I think the high density is the biggest issue here. My child goes to school, to daycare, both my kids go to daycare off seventy eight and like Spence said many times that all the parking on seventy eight. People are lined up down there and when I pull out of the daycare every single day, twice a day. And I try to pull out, I almost get hit every day. By some car flying down there because I can't see past all the cars parked on along the road. And that's my biggest concern, I don't want that happening on eighty two because then I have to deal with it twice every morning and twice every day on the way home. So I just, I I'm opposed against it, I I think maybe if they come up with a better plan, then I'm okay with it. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
One more. This is user Brian Thatcher.
Thanks, Brian, go ahead.
Um, yes, I'm, I live up in the sycamores as well, I've been here for almost seven years. You know, obviously raised my family here, you know. Come from West Jordan off Grizzly Way, moved up this way to find a little bit. More quietness, just as much as anybody. Enjoy our neighborhoods, as many of you know or heard. About that, but my question is if. As to the whole council, if you were to approve this, how many of you would raise your hand right now and sell your place and move up this? So you could enjoy the part of what you voted yes in. That's my question.
I'm not quite sure what you were asking, can you want to say that again?
Yeah, I mean, if you guys were to approve this, how many of you guys would be willing to sell your homes and move up to the high density? To enjoy what you voted on, like, hey, I want to be a piece of this high density.
I'm definitely the wrong guy to ask, this is not really a back and forth, it's just time for you to speak with us, but go ahead.
This is just a legitimate question. You know. In my opinion. And I work in the building industry as well, you know, and more doors, more houses, it benefits me. But. It's not the right place for it, like say we don't want in the road of West Jordan. On a sour note. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Just as a final tally, there are sixty six individuals online, no one has raised their hand.
Everybody with a hand up, all right. Go one more, anybody in the room who's had a sudden bolt of inspiration that hasn't already spoken, sorry, you only get one per customer. All right, I'm not seeing anybody in the room, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment period, thank you all, that was about ninety four minutes. If I remember when we started correctly. Yeah, so we'll bring this now back to the council for discussions, motions and that kind of stuff. We want to switch the screen to the. I I I don't think there was anything, so just for full disclosure. Councilmember Green just asked if we wanted the applicant to address any concerns, I think everything that was brought up, the applicant already addressed in their opening salvo. So we'll go ahead and and leave it there unless the council has questions for the applicant or for staff, Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you. First, I want to address something that many community members have brought up and it's schools and overcrowding. And as a former school board member, I encourage you to reach out to your elected school board members. And share your concerns because as a body, we are not allowed to consider that. In this vote, so just know that, I understand that the schools are crowded. Maybe the gravel pit's a great place to put a new school. Maybe they could get a good deal from the Jones family for it, I don't know, but we can't look at that. Another thing that I want to bring up is. I understand that when we add all of that green space, including a parcel that. Come on, across Stokes Lee's that we're saying is large enough to be a. A divider, a good buffer, and then we put part of the green space there. I'm sorry, I agree with the public saying that this feels more high density than low density. I also wanted to address, Mr. Seestren brought up interest rates and he went back a little ways. But I'm here to tell you that some of us in this room had interest rates as high as I believe thirteen percent. Twelve and a half, twelve and a half, I got a really good deal. Because something, I don't know, mine was nine and seven eights. So I'm, I just want to convey that with housing. It ebbs and flows, right, the interest rates go up, they go down. So I don't think that's a good argument for why you need to have a zone change. Now I want to go on to what I appreciate. I appreciate that the traffic study was done. However, with any study, I had a developer bring in a study on commercial development and tell me. That I didn't need Jordan landing in my city. So studies are paid for by people and they sometimes go a little more that way. But I think this study was a good study. And one of the things that it showed is nine thousand south is at failure and it will continue to be. And that is exactly what UDOT says, and as someone that drives that road, I agree. I greatly appreciate the inclusion of the affordable housing and not using ADUs for the affordable housing. I appreciated seeing that in the MDA. I'm grateful for the community meetings that Peterson's put on. I am concerned, as I stated later that earlier, that the geotech was not included. I understand that it's going to be done. But I'm still concerned because. I think that could change penciling out for you and that's a concern. We talked about property rights. And I agree, we all have property rights and sometimes it's really hard. To know, you know, when, when you come up to me and your hand goes here, I know that I can't charge you with assault. But once it hits me, I know that's assault, but with property rights, it's a little more fuzzy, right? Like the guy next, you know, if he has on really strong cologne, can I say no? I can't, so those are hard decisions. And he doesn't, he always smells good, so it's. But when we're talking about that, I can't help but think, as was brought up. We spent a lot of time on our general plan. Development services and our volunteer residents spent a lot of time on the general plan. I don't understand why the Jones family. Or Peterson Development didn't come to one of those meetings and say. You know what, this parcel here. We don't think that's going to work. And here's what we think you should do with that so that we could adopt that in the general plan. It just. Bother me a little bit that they didn't come forward with that then. When I look at in the packet at the existing land use and the proposed land use. When I look at in the packet at the existing land use and the proposed land use, I worry that when we have the very low density and then we have this mixed juice that doesn't have any very low. And in most of the community members, it's high density. And then we go down to the Jones product, project, no, yeah, Jones Ranch. That, um, only they have a new name now, but anyway, that property. Um, right now, what I show is that up on the hill on the Oakers, it was going to be very low density. And in fact, at one point, Mike Jones said on one of those bluffs is where he would like his home. But I worry that in the future, because we saw earlier that MDAs can be altered, I worry that the Jones Ivory and Company will come back and say, you know what? It doesn't really fit to put high, low density up there, very low density now because you've got high density to the north of us. That is a concern that I have. Um, land use. By saying yesterday, it takes away opportunity in the future for the multimillion dollar homes that Chair Jacob used to talk about for a future jazz player. When he, when they did, when I first got on the council, the gentleman that I served with, um, they often spoke of that and and I agreed with them that that is the place in West Jordan to have some multi. At the time they were million dollar homes, but fast forward, now they'd be multimillion dollar homes. As for the need for housing, we all agree that there's a need. We agree that there's a need for affordable housing. But what I want to point out is if the builders and the developers built all the entitled units in Utah, we would have an surplus of housing. So for me, that's not an argument to rezone. Uh, I have heard the developers desire, but I don't feel that the data is present to require a zone change. I understand it's not easy to develop this site. But I also feel like many, many years have passed and land has remained undeveloped. And I understand property rights and I understand that maybe the owner of this land now wants to sell. But I don't think we need to develop every square inch of Utah along I fifteen today. I have a concern that both the north and south are very low and I've discussed that. Um, open spaces, again, that little corner by Stokely's, I don't think that should really be counted. I understand you're buying it from Ivory and its counts, but no one's going to walk out onto Stokely's and across the street to use a piece of non-groomed green space. I worry that will be a weed patch. And I have a concern on eighty-two hundred south where the slopes are and we're going to put, um, the trails. Because when I drive down eighty-two hundred south and it dead ends and I've seen this in other areas and I get calls about this in other areas. And then you have a field that has some areas where you can walk. Illicit activity starts there. I have heard more from this than any vote I have ever taken. And that includes a boundary change that included my neighborhood and my religious community. And they were not happy. Um, so I look forward to hearing what other council members might have, but I have heard you. I want you to know I have heard you. And those are the things as I went through the packet that that I think you should consider too.
Councilmember Green.
Thank you. I'll try to keep this short, but I've got a few points. Um, I have heard you. I'm the, uh, you, you can ask the planning and zoning, the people. I'm the most vocal about the use of PC zone in the city as anybody. And in fact, the use of the PC zone drove two people to be on this dais today. And so, uh, we understand the PC zone and what it took. Um, some of you said, well, this shouldn't have got this far in this process. This process takes this long. Even if we would have denied it a year ago, if they had to come back, they're almost at the year. And to do it again. So this process does take long. You know, I, I worked for the army for a long time and we always said that the USS Army was the slowest turning battleship in the US Navy. Well, West Jordan's not that far behind. Trust me. It took us a year to get a new parking ordinance, by the way, that we tried to help fix to get so that we can enforce parking better and easier. Uh, we'll see how that goes this winter. I have to, I have to balance property rights. We have, we have to let people, you, you know, Thomas Jefferson originally wrote the Declaration of Independence as life, liberty and the per- and, and life, liberty and property. Uh, so when you're talking about the pursuit of happiness, it's right up there with the property rights. And we have to, we, you know, we have to look at that, have to balance the ability of the property rights. And if we, if we don't, if we can't let the property owner do things with their property, it becomes problematic. Um, I think it's ironic and I'm, you, you're not going to like a couple of these comments I'm going to make. But it's funny that I, I've heard from a lot of people that you look forward for families to go from smaller homes to the large American dream home. Well, you know what? This neighborhood is designed to go from small home to a larger home. Many of you testified you lived in the, uh, in the smaller lots in the Sycamores and moved into the Sycamores. Same thing. And, and so, uh, you know, and I don't understand how this wouldn't create a family experience or why this wouldn't be friendly. I have to tell you, a lot of the things I heard tonight were value judgments. They, not based on facts, they were emotional value judgments that I don't know if I can consider very well. Markets and markets have changed. The housing market has changed over the last, last five or six years and it's crazy. But let me get into a couple of specifics. Particularly, and I'll hit a couple of these. One is density. This is not a high density project. The fact of the matter is, is that you do not like what the density looks like, not the density. Because I've heard plenty of you stand up and say, well, if this looked like Sycamores, we'd have no problem with it. Well, guess what? The Sycamores is a six hundred acre planned community that has little houses and big houses. And that's, this is just an extension of that. Let me give you a couple of numbers. Can I, and so I do not believe this is high density. It's got seventeen percent townhomes. But let me just give you some numbers that you ought to consider. Because a lot of you stood up here and said, well, I'd take R one eight. Let me give you some things to consider. In Utah, the average household size, last time I heard was three point three. I think it actually going down a hair. But I'm, I'm going to use the number three point three. And this development with three hundred and eighteen homes at three point three, there's one thousand forty-nine point four people that'll live in the house. Now I'll give the credit that it'll go to one thousand fifty and not the point four. If this were R one eight, total acreage, there would be three hundred and eighty homes. Now with the un, unbuildable slopes, I see probably about three hundred and thirty to three hundred and fifty homes. But that would increase the people from ten fifty to as much as over eleven fifty. You complain about the parking and the number of people, but you want more because you want it to have the eight, the eight thousand square foot lots. Puts me in a conundrum where I say, I can't understand where you want to go other than the fact that you want the, the houses to look like what you want. Because the parking for a thousand fifty people, if it's in eight acre lots or in a cottage home, it's the same parking. They all have the same driveway lit. They all have the same dri- they, they all have the same driveway width. You look at the setback, they all have the same driveway width and they all have twelve, twenty-two foot setbacks to the garage door. With the exception of the rear, the rear loaded garage. Um, as Councilmember Light, Whitelock said, we can't consider school attendance. And reducing the density ought to help. Um, the existing neighborhoods in the area, there's a PC to the north, a PC to the south, that the PC to the south has ten units an acre. And we're arguing over four point two. I would also argue that the way they're building this, it would reduce the number of ADUs. If you built, and I'll, I'll change the equation a little bit, but if you built, built ten thousand square foot lots on every lot in that neighborhood, you could now have two homes on that neighborhood because external ADUs would be permitted. Many of you've written saying you want single family homes. Eighty-three percent of these homes are single family. There's only fifty-four townhomes in the, in, in that. If you wanted to visit high density, come to the apartment complex just across the street from my neighborhood. It eventually ended up to be about twenty-seven units to the acre. Councilmember Lamb and I fought that and because of some legal issues, it is there. If you don't like high density, we have it in my neighborhood. Four point two units an acre is not high density. Um, the, the reason why the planned community went to, uh, two hundred acres with the variance for the city council's discretion was that development. Because they, because they wanted to use the PC zone for eleven point two acres and put two hundred and seventy units on it. What you have to face the reality is that land is going to be built in. Some way or another, you're not going to be able to keep that open. And what I heard from a lot of you is, well, we want to keep it open. That's not going to happen. There is going to be development on that property in one way, shape or, one way, shape or another. Let's talk about the gravel pit for a second. Third cadence and terrain was the only one that we've actually required a geotech before their, their zoning. And that's because they were going to fill in holes that were a hundred feet deep. It had nothing to do with the gravel pit. We did not require a geotech with Ivory with the south end of this gravel pit. We did not require a geotech, although they did it for us for DAI for the three hundred unit development across the street. I will point out that, uh, the gravel pit probably is a critical infrastructure material location. And under the, under the, the municipal land use act in Utah, I'm not going there and touching that with a ten foot pole. Because it gives the, it gives gravel pit operators a substantial amount of rights to operate and to shut down. The one thing that this does provide is an advantage for remediation. Uh, they're going to have to fix it. They're going to have to shut the dust down. They're going to have to clean it up. Think about what has to happen and, and, and I, I actually have um, some experiences with the, uh, with the Draper Geneva land site because, and we've, I've seen up close because my son's on the Draper City Council, I've seen what happens with gravel pits when operators want to do things and the legislature is right there to deal with, um, with the gravel pit operator and I don't want to have to deal with that. Uh, the general plan is advisory. And I will tell you that I think this meets the general plan based on housing types and those kinds of things. Councilmember Whitelock is right. We are changing the general plan and I wish, I wish people would have come to us when we started working on the general plan three or four years ago that we adopted a year ago. But I do think that things have changed. We have decided that we're not going to put a bid park in that area. We've decided that we're not going to put public facilities in that area. So things have changed and likewise, those kinds of things. As far as zoning goes, we have to zone this to something. We can't leave the zone the way it is because we don't use those zones anymore. They're obsolete. They've been made obsolete. We can't use those. It has to be rezoned. Um, those of you that made the argument on commercial, uh, that doesn't fly with me because the PC zone that built the Sycamore's got one piece of commercial property and it got a gas station. This council has been very good about preserving commercial space and that included the forty acres on the south end of Jones Ranch. And we had to make some trade-offs for that to get that commercial. So we are, we are very cognizant about the, 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 uh, the stuff. The natural open space seems to meet the general plan. If you go back and look at the details of the general plan and what natural open space is used for, I've heard people complain that we've not set up, uh, set up enough open space that where Ivory's building in Jones Ranch is getting rid of the antelope herd and deer herds. But then we hear people say, well, I don't want the open space next to me, but you can build a bunch of houses as long as they're like mine. The parking? Um, now I do agree with Councilmember Whitelock. I think that open space on Stokes Lee, I don't know if it's a deal breaker for me, but that, that, that open space on Stokes Lee across the street just, i- i- it, I'm having a hard time making it work for me too. Because you can't walk through it, you can't get to it, the fence blocks it. It's not tied to a trail system. There's nothing there. I'm not sure that I can, I can buy that. Um, I do believe that this meets city parking code. We, it's, it's got plenty of parking based on the spaces and it meets the city parking code. We are, we as a city have had pressure from the legislature to reduce the number of parking spots. I can't increase them more than the parking, the, more than the parking ordinance allows. And so we are what we are with the parking. And even if this was R one eight, the parking would not change because it's the same standard. Lastly, just a couple of things in passing. When I studied the law, I learned that everything in law is about reasonableness. I cannot be unreasonable in trying to balance the rights of property owners versus those with undeveloped property. I think we have to be extremely reasonable with the Utah State Legislature. Cities have come under attack because of unreasonable development standards. Last year, if you didn't know it, the legislature was looking at by right, five units an acre development. It was this city who with, with a couple of field trips and a couple of other things, helped successfully block that development. There are that, that statute that said that any developer could put by right, five units an acre. In the last couple of weeks in the Deseret News, there was an editorial that called for by right, seven units to an acre because they said six thousand square foot lots is what gets us where you ought to be. I believe that if we were to, by the way, that would stick you with four hundred and fifty homes, uh, next to you, not three hundred and eighteen. And I don't think the legislature would look at whether it's developable or not. They'd say you got seventy-five acres, you can build seven units an acre. Go for it. I am not going to put this city, and I want you to think about this. We have lots of control over this MDA. I am not going to put this city in a situation. And I'm still deciding whether I'm voting yes or no, by the way, but I'm, I'm leaning towards yes. But I do not want to put this city in a situation where we're the ones that they said, see, cities are unreasonable, four point two units an acre. It, they don't want, they're, 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 they're just being the NIMBY city and we're not going to, and we're going to take over and there's no more local control over zoning. We have, we have had luck with our PC zone. We're able to use the open space, put, make them put amenities, other kinds of things in there that can, that help with the quality of life and those kinds of things. By the way, at no cost to you, because if they have a park, you're not paying for it because their HOA is. But I'm not going to get the le- I'm not, I'm probably not going to give the legislature an excuse to take away our control. This does have the missing middle. From my, from where I've lived my entire life or a lot of my life, I grew up in a single family house in Midvale. Moved to a small, single family house in South Salt Lake. And then moved to a duplex in the middle of a bunch of single family houses in East Midvale, Fort Union area. And then I bought a home before I moved to West Jordan. There was a duplex that sat between two single family homes. We didn't have any problems. We all got along and it was a great neighborhood. So I've lived in the missing middle most of my life and I understand. and I understand the need for the missing middle and why we need to have these kind of houses. Yes, I am elected, and I'm elected to represent all of you, but I'm also elected to represent the business owners and property owners in this city. The Jones, the Jones family owns seventy-five acres. They have a right to do with it what they want, pretty much. They get, they get to develop it. We're not putting in Olympia Hills next to the Sycamores. Because trust me, if we were putting Olympia Hills and sitting next to the Sycamores, I'd be the first person jumping up and down. And I was the first person jumping up and down, and I, I, I was heavily engaged with Mayor McAdams for, for his first veto. Then it got later approved that we had no choice. But, uh, the Petersons, they do business in West Jordan. They're landowners in West Jordan. And so I have to also recognize them and, and as well as the community, and I have to balance that. Um, yes, uh, y- you know, sometimes, sometimes we have to make difficult decisions up here. You may, you know, at the end of the day, you may not like that decision, uh, but whatever the decision I make, I hope you respect that, because it is a difficult decision to balance property rights versus, um, what the community wants. And I've been involved in the fight on the other end. We almost got the two-hundred-and-seventy, uh, units, and I will just have to be, I, I will have to tell you, if it gets vote, if it gets voted down, be careful what you ask for, because I will tell you what happened with the station at Gardner Mill. Developer came in and wanted to put townhomes on the ten or eleven units of, of acreage. The neighbors complained and said, "Density is too high." The next developer came in and said, "Uh, I want to put fifteen, seventeen units an acre." Neighbors got together and worked, and the density was too high. Now we're stuck with twenty-seven units per acre on the corner because the density was too high. You have to be careful, because in the future, you cannot project sometimes taking, taking what you've got and being able to take the wins that you got with the, with the changes that Petersons make. Maybe those wins should be enough to, to, because if you got a total win, you might get a total loss in the future, because you never know what a future council might do. So, anyway, that's, those are my comments, and I will leave it at that. Councilmember Bedore.
Uh, first of all, I will, I will say that, um, uh, Councilmember Shelton and I took a drive out there. Not only took a drive out there, we climbed the dune that would be the big slope and looked at it all. And I, I don't think Councilmember Shelton was too happy that I, I made him climb up there with me. I didn't. I climbed up there. He followed me. That's all on him. But, but we went up there to the top, and I'm just going to be completely honest. I looked from that top, and I saw, well, this is the, the big slope, and now at the end of this, the bottom of this, this is where the, um, you know, those townhomes are going to go. And I, I stood on there, and I looked, and I thought, wow, that's a pretty far away from where all those homes are that are, are upset. And, uh, before I, before I, I finish this, I will tell you, a year ago, when I thought I possibly, possibly was going to be, uh, on the council in December, when the last big group came through, um, I went through and studied everything. And I will tell you, I would have voted no on that for some, some different reasons, reasons that I believe that were taken care of. But I would have voted no back then. Um, so now, coming up to this time, I wanted to make sure, and that was without really seeing the property, but now I wanted to make sure I saw the property. So I got up there, and I looked, and I saw the difference. I saw the distance, and then I looked, uh, to the east, and I saw the houses right there, and I started looking, going, well, that's about the same size of these houses that are going to be going in. What, what is the, what is the big difference? Um, what is the huge difference of what we're going to have just a little bit there to what we're going to have right here? Turns out, those are actually a little bit smaller than what are going to be going in, in, uh, right across eighty-two-hundred from you. Um, and then I was kind of looking at, wow, and these other homes down here are going to be even further away. Uh, I'm just, so I'm kind of watching this, and I'm, I'm there with Councilmember Shelton, and we're talking about things. And in my mind, I'm thinking, I, I really don't see what the problem is. I'm looking at where it's going to be going at, uh, you know, the, the roads out. Once, uh, once Stokesley is, uh, is completed, that's, a lot of people are going to be coming right out there in a way. Those of you that are in that area aren't going to see a lot of that traffic that'll be coming out. They've got a right-hand lane. Most of you are already going to be on that. Um, and this is just me, looking. And, uh, yeah, and you can laugh, but I can, I can tell you that I've also had a couple of my homes that I've had pri, previously, I've had, I bought a home, my first home in West Jordan was right on Fifty-Six Hundred West. No houses near me at all. None. But you know what I knew? Houses are going to be coming in. I had a West Jordan that was, I mean, a Walmart that was going to be built, and I had people complain about that Walmart. Complain about that Walmart coming in, what that's going to do to our neighborhood. Me and all of my neighbors went to that Walmart two or three times a week. You just start to go with it. We complained about what was going to be coming in across Fifty-Six Hundred West from us. Most of my best friends turned out to be across Fifty-Six Hundred West. So, I tell you all this because, oh, and then I had my home before I moved there, it was in Leighton, same sort of thing. I lived in the middle of nowhere. And I can show you a picture of that home. Literally no houses near me. Then they put all kinds of, all the homes around me and everything. Again, some of them, uh, smaller, but, uh, became a great neighborhood. Someone said they looked up where I live. I live in a little town home row, row, in duplexes. That is my now forever home. So for those of you who talk about different lifestyles, my different lifestyle was to go to a home that I, I wanted, and I liked it, and I have a good time there. I don't need the big house anymore. I wanted to downsize from where I was. So, anyway, I'm going to tell you what I was doing. Up on that hill, I thought, well, I want to see what these folks are going to do when they come and talk. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna prejudge anything. In my mind, I can look at this and think, homes are going to go here. You can't stop the progress of that. I want to hear what they have to say, because I think this is looking, uh, pretty decent. Then what I heard is I heard a lot of, um, different things. I heard, and, and this is just, I, I take in information, and I try to really put it into what's being said. And I heard a lot of people talking about, "We shouldn't be doing this just so a developer can make money." They talked about the money. But then I heard the same people talk about lowering my property values. So is it about the money, or is it about the money? That's where I wonder about that. I heard people say, "Oh, we'd be all great if you just put the Sycamores the way it is and put it in that area." No, you wouldn't, because I heard most of you complain about your own neighborhood all night long. I heard most of you talk about how you don't like living in your neighborhood, and I'm going, whoa, man, what is going on here? But now they're telling me they don't want this. I'm hearing people talking about the ruining of, you know, the, the, now the people driving through your neighborhoods and stuff. I seriously doubt that the people on this side are going to cross and then just keep driving through your neighborhood. There's no reason for them, unless they were to go visit friends, which is what I'd hope you would be doing and walking over. I've heard about, I heard four different people really downplay the type of people that will be moving into that. And that hurt me, because I am a person who moved into that, and I live on a row of twenty homes that are duplexes. All but one of them are owners. Hold on, I'm just, I'm here to talk. I'm just letting you know. I, I, I will say, before I get that, I will say something good. And, and just because you get upset. I was really glad that you didn't do what you did last time and just line up reading from the thing. I think you all spoke from the heart, and I think it was genuine. I think last time we was reading the scripts, I stopped. All right, well, peace out. I'm just here to, to help and tell you some things. But if you're going to give up, this is exactly what you said was going to happen, that people are going to give up. I'm trying to help you and put your words into something that makes something sense to me. I didn't like that you immediately closed yourself off from the people who were going to be moving there. That's what I felt in the stories you're telling, that we fought for this, and across the street, you don't know what other people are fighting for and what they're going for. And you talk about it's a different neighborhood. All around you, you're in a PC zone, so if we make something a PC zone, it's, we're making it the, the same, but yet down in the corners. So, uh, what else did I put that I was, uh, you talked about the, you know, the, the good neighbor things. You talked about, uh, the, the parking at eighty-two-hundred. I, I'd have to see it, but there's just a little bit of road there on eighty-two-hundred that would be that, and that's all near those houses that are the eight-thousand-square-foot houses. So there, it's going to be, I really doubt that someone's going to park and then walk a quarter of a mile to get down to, you know, the, the cottage homes. And this is all speculative. What I'm saying is speculative, and what you're saying is speculative.
No, no, guys, guys.
I'm okay, I'm okay, I'm okay. No, I'm, I'm just saying it's still speculative on eighty-two-hundred and seventy-eight. Until it happens, it doesn't happen. But if the people are, are already parking at eighty-two-hundred, it's from the neighbors that are already there. And if they're not parking, then you're just saying that the people who are going to be moving in are the only ones who are going to be parking on eighty-two-hundred. If they're already parking there, it's already happening. And so I'm just looking at a thing that's going there, and what I felt was a, a lot of, all we want is the right kind of neighborhood to be built there. And that, I, I don't see that as a lot of, of what I look at at West Jordan. And again, uh, someone said, would you, you know, that I live in a fully-developed area. You know what? I don't. In fact, just a few months ago, Pearson Farms was sold, and we're going to be redeveloping that. And I had to vote on that. And I had to vote on what I thought was going to be the right thing. And in fact, just, uh, last week, we had another town hall, town hall about that, and where I was able to talk to people and show them what was going to be going. We were able to go, this is how people are going to be going through. They're not going to go through here. They're going to be, people are going to be going this way, this way. And they, oh, okay. Once they were able to see some of that, they were okay. But, so yeah, I had to develop, I had to rezone an area not more than fifty yards away from my home. People who are going to be voting for or against me, and I thought that that was what was best for the city. Now, is this exactly what's best for the city? I'm not sure. But what I want to be best for the city is that we don't put bad connotations of the people who might be moving there. That's what I don't want. I, I have loved my neighbors on all sides, and this just really hit me in a different way. I'm still, uh, just much like Councilmember Green. It's something, I came here, not sure how I was going to vote, and I'm still not a hundred percent certain. But I wanted you to know that when you think about things, you know, it's really, here, here's the weird thing for me, and I, I wanted to keep this short, but we, we, we talk about our neighborhoods. But in reality, our neighborhoods are the four or five houses around us. They are. And, and I will, I will let you know, you know, little smirks to me like I'm an idiot doesn't make me want to be more on your side. So that's however you want to do. Um, we're very close neighborhood people in this world. We don't go out. I doubt many of you are even going to be, no matter what homes are on this side of eighty-two-hundred, I doubt many of you would be driving over to go see all the people, unless there was a reason to it, you know, a church group or something like that. You wouldn't go over there to really just go hang out and meet the people. There's a nice park that's going to be built there. You've already said you're not planning on ever going over there. Um, I, I think where you think that some of us have made up our minds, the same could maybe be said, um, on the other side as well. And I would ask that we all just take a look at what's going, uh, what's happening, what's going on, and that's what I have to do with every single vote I do here. And that is what is important, is looking at every single vote individually and not trying to be preconceived ideas. I'll just end there.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Chair. Um, it's been a long night, especially all of you who came here tonight to, to give your thoughts, and, um, six years ago, well, probably eight years now, I, I was sitting down there just like you are, um, just like, uh, Councilmember Green said, there was an apartment complex going in that we didn't want. I don't want an apartment complex near my home. It's going to be horrible. I just don't want that. Don't want the traffic. Don't want the people, yada, yada, yada. I, I had all my preconceived notions, and that's okay. I should have that, because it's where my home is, just like you guys have your home. Um, there's been a lot of, uh, I, I don't, there, there's been a lot of speculation about the way that we think and make our decisions tonight, and I just want to kind of put that to rest, that, number one, and I'm speaking for myself and not framing this on this dice, is tonight's decision is not based on me getting reelected or getting votes from anybody in this room or in the city. My decision is based off of information I've received from the city, information I've received from you guys as citizens, and information that I've received from the developer. And I've told the developer, I don't like the carriage lots. I would never buy a carriage lot. Um, when one of the people online asked if I would ever move there, uh, we don't answer, um, during the public comments, but I'll answer now, no, I would not buy a carriage lot. I don't like them. Um, my home is modest. It's not my dream home, never will be. Uh, but I've lived there for twenty-five years, and it is my home, and I like it. Um, is it the home I want? It, it, probably not, but I'm okay with it. Um, the, the worries I have when we talk about high-density versus low-density, et cetera, is I have a twenty-four-year-old, and I know there was a twenty-four-year-old that came on as well and said he didn't like this, and that's, that's great. But there is going to be a twenty-four-year-old or a twenty-five-year-old that can't afford these eight-hundred-thousand-dollar, million-dollar homes that wants to buy these smaller homes. And so that's why I kind of look at, okay, well, this has been a good mix, and I've, I've got the map from the previous one. Uh, most of you don't know, I wasn't on the council for the last vote, uh, but I was there, and I heard all of your, um, discussions then, and all, all the Planning Commission discussions as well. And I'm glad it went back to Peterson, and Peterson looked at it and redid it and moved all of the carriage homes and the townhomes down to the lower part, so that the homes with the more, with more, uh, square footage were near the Sycamores. Um, that doesn't solve everything. Um, because for me, I'm not, I'm not too concerned about people parking at eighty-two-hundred south. That's, that's just me. I am concerned about traffic on it, because right now, there's only one way in, one way out, which is eighty-two-hundred south. Uh, so until Stokesley is fixed to go to where Ninetieth, well, actually, it's not Ninetieth. I have my map up here. Yeah, until, until Stokesley goes to Eighty-Sixth, to me, it's not a good, good thing right now for traffic, because everyone has to go off at eighty-two. So my hope is that when this does go through, excuse me, and something will go through, is that we, as a city, are looking at ways to connect Stokesley to Eighty-Sixth and have a second way out, which would also include, if you live in the Highland area, it looks like it's Jacobs Park Lane. There's two exits out there. Someday, those two exits are going to go out to another portion of homes and hopefully connect back to, back to back, so that you guys can get out of there. Um, so, so real quick, getting back to what happened with, uh, the apartment complex, we fought it. We went, I would think it went through three iterations. Um, and there were at least thirty of us that were active. There were more that were involved in it. We fought it three times. It went back, and it finally got built. Um, do I like it today? You know, I don't live at the apartment complex, so I don't have to worry too much about the traffic in and out of the park, co, complex, but it hasn't affected me as much as I thought it would. Um, but yeah, it's there now, and it's not But yeah, it's there now and it's not going away. Just like you guys said, you build these carriage lots, you put them in, they're not going away. The people will still be there. And even in my neighborhood, people are parking on the street and I hate it cuz sometimes I can't get through. I don't know how you fix that, but it's like some of you said as well, you know, that's why you left the lower sycamores is because the way that was designed. So I just want this to be done right. Real quick, I wanna let you all know, as we've been going through this, I've got the map out, I'm looking at everything, looking at every possible detail of what we can do. And in the Highlands, it's called Highlands, correct? I'm saying that right? Highland? Hyde Park? Hyde Point, I'm sorry, I said Highlands. I counted over two hundred homes. So this, well, if that's the number, that's great. So there's about two hundred homes that I counted here. So for me, if we could take this new one and cut it down to fifty, that kinda meet in the middle, you know? Now, that's what I was looking at. So I would like to see more single-family homes that are not carriage homes put into this if we can. I'm not sure where we're going to go to bring it back again. This is the second iteration. I'm not opposed to doing a third iteration. Eventually, this land will be developed. It is difficult to develop on the gravel pit, I get that. But there is a way to make it work. So as far as that goes, we have heard you. There's six different people up here tonight. We have a council member that's traveling tonight and is not with us, and she's heard you as well. And I've seen her thoughts on it as well. But we just wanna make sure, you know, that this isn't just a decision that we've made overnight as well. We've been watching, we've been studying, we've been talking, we've got the info from every different angle. And we just wanna make sure it's done right. So thank you for your input tonight.
Councilmember Shelton.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I've been, I've been struggling with the fact that I'm gonna have to sit here tonight and make a decision on this for weeks. And it's not easy for any of us, I know that. Some great points have been made tonight, I've taken notes. A question that was asked during the public comments by Josh Siklowski piqued my interest, and I'm sure there's some answers that, but I don't know what they are. But basically, the owner of the gravel pit has not remediated the pit. And should the city somehow push back on the county to force the owner, the current owner of the gravel pit, to remediate this property? It's a question, I don't know if it could be answered tonight, but it's a question that I would like to hear about, hear some answers on. Another question I ask is if we went to an R-one type zone in this property or on this site, Councilmember Green already brought this up. Would we essentially get higher density than what is already proposed because of the ADUs that would inevitably be added to the properties in order for people to be able to afford them? And not just an ADU, well, I guess internal ADUs, not just external, right? So people renting out their basements and having multiple families. And I even have people in my neighborhood, single-family, low-density housings where I live. A lot of my neighbors are renting out their basements just to be able to afford to live there. Or multiple families, you know, like extended family type situation, my next-door neighbor. If this is approved, if this is approved, is it possible that my concern with the R-one zone would just be that much worse? Because multiple families would be living in these carriage lots or in the townhomes. And if so, then parking would become impossible. So parking is becoming a serious issue in this city. I hear you on that seventy-eight hundred south. I have, I've been, I've visited these homes out on seventy-eight hundred south, just north and south of seventy-eight hundred and just to the east of Bacchus Highway. That's insane out there. So this, but at the same time, and then I listened, I was surprised, honestly, a little bit surprised to hear Councilmember Green be in favor of this because he's more likely to be against it than me. So I appreciated his input. And honestly, and I've told city staff this already, I'm struggling with this one. Because, again, we go back to the, it's already been brought up, but property rights are a real thing. And I believe in the Constitution of the United States of America deeply. So this is a hard one tonight, and I'll just leave it at that.
Any other comments, discussion, questions? A motion? Not emotion, a motion. I think we've got a little bit of everything. Councilmember Green.
I'm still concerned about that open space on Stokesley.
Well, if you have questions, you can talk.
I'm still concerned about it cuz it's just an isolated little piece acre land. I'm, neighborhood's not gonna like me. But...
Oh, by the way, sorry, before you say what you're about to say, staff has requested we do two motions, one for each ordinance.
Yes, I was moving this down, oh crap, that's why I paused.
Let's do one at a time. I don't care which one you do first.
I want some better, I think I want some better answers on the Stokesley thing, and there were a couple other questions. The one that you asked earlier about the density, if the geotech doesn't come in, because I didn't see anything on the MDA for that that said, that said, oh, if it doesn't work, that the density goes away or density shifts. So because of those two, I am going to make a motion to, what's the correct term, Allen, postpone? No, I don't want a table. What's?
You can postpone to a later date.
I wanna postpone ordinance number twenty-four forty-seven to a later date. As Councilmember Lamb said, we'll give him a third shot at it. But I want to postpone that to a later date. No later than February twenty-eighth.
Okay, we have a... Gotcha. Okay, we have a motion on ordinance twenty-four forty-seven. This is the master development agreement and plan for Copper Meadows to postpone for up until February twenty-eighth at the latest. Discussion to that motion, Councilmember Whitelock. By the way, made by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Chair Jacob. Just a couple of things that I wanna remind everyone of. Councilmember Green, you talk about the carriage, are the carriage ones? No, are the carriage lots the ones that share the driveways, right? Those are carriage, okay. The carriage lots, I get it that they each have two parking places, but what we need to remember is that if I have an eight-thousand-square-foot lot in front of my home, I also have one or two parking spaces, which with those, you don't because you've got the driveway entrance in a little bit. So I do believe that it's a little less parking because you don't have the street to park on. Yeah, and maybe that's something we can work on. And just, I agree with Councilmember Lamb that maybe, I know you're telling me that it doesn't pencil out otherwise, but I also know that you have a really intelligent engineer and group that can be very creative. And maybe we can do some of the things as Councilmember Jacob said from, I think her name was Cassie, Cassie, you know, with like this, like homes. And I get the Stokesley is sixty-seven feet, but again, you're including a piece of land on the east side of there as part of your property. So it's kind of hard for me to then say, oh, there's all this space in between if you're including that, right? So, and I do have some concerns about that cuz all I can picture is native plants that usually then become weeds cuz they're not really native plants. Anyway, then there's a couple of things that I want the community to be aware of, that while the planning commission cannot use public clamor to vote, this body can. Also, if the iteration that finally passes is not something you like, the mayor also has veto power. And what I really want to convey is, I know some of your fellow residents of the area have left, but I really appreciate you coming and staying. It's late, and I'm sure almost all of you, maybe one or two of you don't have jobs, but, you know, we all have jobs that we have to do outside of here, right? But I just appreciate you coming and sharing your thoughts because it matters in our government. If we, the people, don't speak up, and if we don't speak up because we feel like our voices don't matter, A, it makes me sad, but it also allows bad things to happen in our government. So please stay involved. I understand how frustrating this is cuz once again, you're postponing! And I get it, and I would be so frustrated if I was sitting out there. But hopefully, we can work with the developer. And again, they are a good development firm. They have done some great things in our city. And I do believe that they can be creative. And maybe there is a way to hold the, I think the current gravel pit operator was not the one that did the deal that they were supposed to do the remediation. So I'm not sure where that's at, but just a few extra thoughts. And then my last thought is, we had a development come in and it passed this body. And I just want to remind us that although what we're envisioning is that people can move in and buy these homes, so can corporations. Thank you.
Any further comments or discussion to the motion? Again, the motion is to postpone ordinance twenty-four forty-seven, the master development agreement and plan. Right, seeing none, let's vote on the motion to postpone.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Chair Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Kicking the can, yes.
Thank you, I show that motion passes six to zero.
It's important to remember that that was not a vote to approve anything, that was a vote to postpone. Now we got another ordinance.
I'm gonna postpone ordinance number twenty-four forty-eight to no later than February twenty-eighth.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Whitelock. Discussion to the motion. This one I'd actually vote to approve because it's just the zone, which I think, you could be right about that. Okay, all right, seeing no further discussion, let's vote on this one. This is a motion to postpone, we don't need a roll, well, let's roll call vote, let's do it anyway.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Chair Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion passes six to zero.
We all stubbed our toe a little bit on that can as we kicked it down the road. All right, I do want to, now that those are where they are, I do wanna thank those that have come and especially those that have stayed, but even those that participated online. That was probably one of the longest comment periods I've seen in my nine years. So I appreciate the passion and I appreciate your involvement, much like others have said. Let's go to business, go ahead, Councilmember Green.
Move to approve consent.
We're not on consent yet.
We got the other one, don't we?
Would you like a motion to take the agenda out of order?
How about we, how about we move to approve resolution twenty-four forty?
Okay, let's introduce it first real quick.
Well, we have to first put someone in that position.
Go ahead and make your motion, does it say, any second? Okay, I don't have a second, so let's call that.
Twenty-four oh forty needs to fill in the blank.
Introduce resolution twenty-four dash oh forty.
The Cultural Arts Society of West Jordan would like to have a member of the city council sit as a member of their board. Details are included in the request for council action. It's directed and governed by Title I, Chapter Six, Section fourteen of City Code on appointment of council representatives to external organizations. What's before you tonight is simply choosing one of you to be on their board. I previously emailed to you a list of their current board members as well as their board bylaws and rules of governance and their current board members, which I already said. So I've said that twice.
So now can I move to approve resolution twenty-four forty, appointing Councilmember Bedore to the Cultural Arts Society of West Jordan?
I'll second it, but I think you should have let us decide if that's who we wanted. But I'm sure, I don't know that anybody else wants. Bob is certainly qualified, so I support it.
All right, Mr. Chandler.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question about something that just happened on a prior item? I don't mean to interrupt the discussion on this, are we still going on?
Can we take this vote really quick and then get to that?
And then afterwards, thank you.
Perfect, no problem, thank you. Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution twenty-four oh forty with the name of Councilmember Bedore in the blank. And the second, that's made by Councilmember Green, seconded by everybody. I think Councilmember Shelton was, okay, Councilmember Whitelock said it loudest in the mic anyway. So we'll go Councilmember Whitelock as the official second on that. And we'll go to a roll call, oh, discussion to the motion, Councilmember Lamb.
But what if I wanted to do it? I'm kidding.
All right, let's go to a roll call vote.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes, hundred percent.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Chair Jacob.
Yes, ninety-nine percent, no, I'm just kidding.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Thank you, I show the motion passes six to zero.
Now can I move to presume? And one more, we have, let's go to Mr. Chandler here really quick, he has a question procedurally.
Can I jump back to the item that we just postponed?
Yes.
Just to clarify, we did hold the public hearing tonight.
And closed the public hearing.
And we've closed, I think we were in compliance with all of that. What is the council's intention with the meeting that we're postponing to? Is there an expectation that there would be an opportunity for public comment on the item at that point? Or is that not? My recommendation would be that the council has satisfied the requirements of the laws regarding a public hearing on this. But I just think it might be helpful for some of the members of the public who are here to understand what your intentions are with that meeting.
No, I appreciate that. My, just as chair, which I will only be for another month, is my intention on that would be to schedule it as a business item. We have citizen comment period in every meeting where you can come speak to a business item. So if you'd like to come, you can speak at every meeting from now until then during citizen comments if you wanna come for three minutes at a time. No obligation, and you're welcome to come back. I'm sure your neighborhood watchdogs will keep you informed of when the... I'm sure your neighborhood watchdogs will keep you informed of when the, when it does get put on an agenda. But again, that will probably be when I'm no longer chair. So I can't tell you exactly when it'll be at this point. But when it does get on an agenda, it will, we will have public comment period in that meeting as well. It'll just be that period at the beginning when you can call people names and stuff. That's the period where you'd be able to, to speak on this. Councilmember Shelton.
I would like to just speak in favor of a public hearing on, because there's going to be changes to it.
Yeah, well, there may or may not.
Well, yeah.
Getting questions answered, so.
Assuming that there's changes being made to it, I would speak in favor of another public hearing.
Okay, well, well, Councilmember Whitelock.
I just wanted to say I agree with Councilmember Shelton. If there's, if there's changes, I think I would be happy to have another public hearing.
Okay.
And I see lots of head bobs.
Okay, well, we'll, I, I will let council leadership at that point decide, decide how they want to address that. Because when they plan the agendas, and that won't be me. Unless you want to bring it up in December, in which case, wear red and green. All right, the next item on the agenda, we have this resolution that the mayor brought forward that I agreed with him on. So I support him in this. This is resolution 24J24-01, a joint resolution recognizing November 30th, 2024, a small business Saturday to support small businesses in West Jordan. Mr. Anderson, do you want to speak to this? I was going to go to the mayor because he likes to chew.
If I can just give you a little bit of clarity real quick, the resolution, the joint resolution in your packet used a template that did not include the mayor's signature. When you approve it, we will have it for signatures for you and the mayor. But what's in the packet does not have the mayor's signature because we used a template and typically the mayor does not sign resolutions.
We'll make sure we get one with his, with a line on it for when he actually signs it. Council Vice Chair Lamb.
Are we ready for comments?
Yes.
I'm not ready.
Yeah, discussion.
I'm just going to put out my thoughts there. I support small businesses every day, not just on Saturday, the 30th. So I'm going to be not in favor of the resolution, but I am in favor of small business.
Okay. Any other discussion, comments, questions? Mayor, would you like to, just because it is a joint resolution, we don't usually do those, but I'll.
I would be happy to address this. So this came to me and I talked to our economic development director and a couple of the people who are in businesses along with the Chamber of Commerce. And they all thought it was a fantastic idea and are very excited. Barbara apologized that she couldn't make it here tonight, but I think she's really glad she didn't. Had she waited till this came up to show the, the chamber's support on this resolution. So I think it's kind of fun that the day after Thanksgiving is when a lot of people like, they, they like to go out for shopping. And Saturday is a good day for recognizing small businesses, not just limited those to a retail business. Then Mondays, you know, is now Cyber Monday. So this kind of fills in between there. And this is a national movement that's going across the country. And I thought it would be a good thing to get on board with and to show support to. And you know, I'm not a real big fan of resolutions generally, but this one caught my attention.
Thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and move to approve resolution J24-01.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Jacob, seconded by Councilmember Whitelock. Discussion to the motion. Let's roll call vote.
Thank you for your patience. Okay, Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Chair Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb.
No.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Thank you. I show the motion passes five to one.
Perfect, thank you. Now, Councilmember Green, would you like to make your motion?
Now can I move to approve the consent items?
You may. I'll go ahead and second that. Motion by Councilmember Green to approve the minutes, seconded from November 6th, seconded by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Rule that motion passes unanimously. If I got that wrong, speak up now. All right, Councilmember Green. Move to adjourn. A motion to adjourn, I'll second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, we're adjourned. At 10:56.
He did it before 11, so.
Is Apollo Burger still open?